I will bring to order the Select Board meeting of May 5, 2025. I want to let you know that this meeting is being recorded. And we are all here, so we do not need to do a roll call vote. We will just vote by voice. I'd like everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like you to remain standing in order to honor our military, both past and present, for the work that they have done to keep us free. Thank you. Running down our agenda, we have signed the warrant, so we will move directly into new business. And the first thing we're going to do is we're going to recognize two members of the Dartmouth Community Social Outreach Team, and they are Amy DePietro and Matt Dansrow. I'm going to thank you both for your work with our unhoused residents. The two of you, along with your team, have approached each campsite with reverence for the residents. By showing compassion and grace, you developed a trust which allowed the team to remain solution-focused. The result, as of two weeks ago, that we have all of our previously unhoused residents have secured shelter, which you two were very instrumental in doing that. So on behalf of the board, let me read the citation. "Be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Matthew Dansrow in recognition of Auntie and Amy DePietro in outstanding effort to proactively preventing homelessness for Dartmouth residents and providing options and support to people currently facing homelessness in Dartmouth. And be it further known that the Dartmouth Select Board extends its best wishes for continued success." Matt and Amy, would you like to address us on to the mic, please?
Hi, good evening. Amy DePietro, Director of the Dartmouth Council on Aging and a member of the Dartmouth Community Service Outreach Team. I would just like to say that this is a true team effort. We have members from the Board of Health, Christopher Michaud and Maura Reimer, the public health nurse. We have a liaison from the Police Department, Officer Brandon Baptiste, Dolores Joseph, the youth advocate, and Matthew Dansrow, our outreach coordinator. We would be remiss to not really recognize Matt and his efforts and the knowledge that he has brought with us, with him, to our community to be able to provide the resources and services that we have. Thank you so much.
I would also like to kind of thank the Select Board and everybody in town who's kind of supported it also. I come from 30 years of working in New Bedford nonprofits, so I had a lot of experience with doing all sorts of different things. And one of the things I tried to do is create kind of a one-stop place where anybody who's having a crisis or an issue in town can come, whether it's homelessness, health insurance, public benefits, all that type of stuff. So that's what I've kind of tried to form, or kind of have formed. And so again, I want to thank everybody who's supported us, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you two come on up? I'll hand you this. I'll hand you this one. Oh, we have a photographer. Usually it's me. Usually I daff, daff down, so we have a real photographer. Yep. All right, and I'll have you.
Thank you, guys.
The walk of celebration. Yeah. And as I said, the goal of the Community Outreach Team is really to make sure that anyone in our community who's having any issue is helped, and that is really the core of Matt's job. And going out to find our unhoused residents, our pick count in January was alarming, and it was so cold. And the members of the team would go out and make sure that folks had option, knew their options of going into shelters. And as I said, as of two weeks ago, all of our unhoused residents were in shelters. So let's hope that that continues. So thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have a proposal on the health insurance for the retirees, the high deductible plan. So Gary, could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is something that was brought over, brought last week to the board. It would allow the retirees in town to continue their high deductible plan and not have them go between the age of when they retire to 65 when they become Medicaid-eligible, to have them stay on the plan. It's a little bit more affordable. We require that all new employees come on that, and the vision is that when we hire someone, we can let them know that when you do retire, this is an option for you. So we hope that it helps retaining employees and recruiting employees going forward. So before you have the letter, that I've asked our HR, Benefits, Core, Interim, Melissa Jerome to fill out, and then the signature page that goes along with it for the board's approval if they wish to approve that tonight. And as mentioned at the last meeting, the cost of the town would be about $50,000, and there's usually 73, plus or minus 73 employees that are affected, the retirement.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mc.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald has made the motion, approved by Mr. O'Neil. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Hearing that it's passed unanimously. So we are going to sign this document. Okay, let's start down that end. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a, this is in addition to the policy that we received from Randy Bassett a couple of meetings ago. Once reviewed, we will present it to other departments who also charge fees in this process, and we want to be able to walk through the process and make it applicable adjustments prior to putting this into place. So tonight, we're going to run through this draft, so.
So Madam Chair, at the meeting, prior to, I think, the last meeting, it was presented by, to the board. The board had requested a little bit more teeth in the process and giving more guidance to the board to set parameters on waiving that. So Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator, has worked on the appendix for that, so.
Thank you. Chris, Dolores, yours.
Good evening, Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. So as Gary both mentioned, the board has been discussing creating a policy to make clear and consistent standards for considering fee waiver requests or fee reduction requests. So continuing the conversation before you tonight is the second draft of that policy. So the draft that was reviewed last time with our building official really just pertained to building permits that were handled by that department. This expands it out a little bit further and also incorporates licenses that are issued under the Select Board office. I know that there was some discussion at the last meeting with regards to eligibility requirements, which we have in this updated draft detailed a little bit more and broken out a little bit further on that first page. You know, so with that, the idea would be that the eligible activities would be for newer improved commercial or manufacturing developments, or housing, or rehabilitation for affordable housing, or community-based events, or other exempt activities. So I think one of the things that wasn't incorporated in this last draft was there are certain situations where the town does exempt fee waivers. As an example, if it's a town project, we don't charge ourselves a permit fee. Those would be waived. Historically, the board has also waived the fees for our local fire districts for applications that they've submitted to the town. And additionally, we did incorporate a past practice of reducing licensing fees for veteran service organizations. So the VFW, for example, this board has in the past charged them a reduced annual fee. So that's incorporated in this license. There is also a note in here that it gives the board the discretion to add additional licenses or permits to this policy at any time, at your discretion. So for whatever isn't incorporated on this list of eligible permits, it's certainly up for discussion in a later date. One other thing I would just note is that as of now, this policy only pertains to the licenses and permits under the Select Board, with the understanding that we do have other elected bodies in the town that do have, or potentially could have, their own set of fees, that they may have a separate established policy on for waiving fees. So with that, I'm here to answer your questions and continue the conversation.
I got a question.
Sure.
So are there any dollar values with larger, you know, larger private projects that might need some help?
In terms of a cap?
Cost of, cost of the permits.
So.
You've got a, as an example, there's a project on Dartmouth Street going up for 55 and older. That's a high-ticket item.
Right.
And the cost for permitting is pretty high.
Right. So for, as of right now, this policy, as it speaks to residential, it focuses on affordable housing. You know, the reason for that being that when it comes to residential, you know, there is a lot of different permits that get submitted to our building department downstairs. And so if there was someone doing plumbing work or electrical work, we wanted to make sure, because fees are an important source of town revenue, that we did set some parameters as to what you could request a fee waiver for. So to answer your question, as of now, that type of development wouldn't qualify under this policy. But again, this is subject to, you know, change based on the board's preferences.
And as we said, we will be looking at this and talking to other boards. And those boards, I don't want to forget any of them, so help me along. Board of Health?
Yeah, so Board of Health, Planning Board, Board of Assessors, the Parks and Recreation Board, the Board of Library Trustees, and the Dartmouth Housing Authority would be among the boards that may have a policy. I will also note in here that one of our larger departments, the Department of Public Works, I did have a conversation with their director, and at this time, the only fee waivers they provide are with regards to the Connect to Protect program, which the board approved of recently. So other than that, they have not, they don't have a separate policy with regards to fee waivers.
So that is something, though, that we will be talking to that board about, because on occasion, we're approached by different developers or builders or residents who want assistance. And without having a policy, it can look like we are picking and choosing who we're going to support, or who any of the other boards are supporting, or helping out. And I think it would just be best if we had a policy that we can get a letter of request and put it next to our policy and see how it measures up and make a decision, all things being equal. Mr. Tattelbaum?
A little clarification. Before this policy, we didn't have, really have it stated, we were only giving out a handful of these so-called discounts?
So these waivers, in my time here, there's been, I think, only one or two that have come to the board. Because we don't have a policy, you know, really every single request that has gotten submitted to date has been brought to the board. I think.
There's a handful.
Just a small handful.
So.
Very small handful.
This looks to me like now we've opened it up to be, to have many more to be eligible. Is that, that's my perception. Is that correct or not?
So I don't believe so. I don't think that this opens up eligibility. I think previously, anyone could make the ask, but it was unclear as to what parameters the board wished to operate in when it came to fee waivers. So what I think the intent of this policy is, is to set clear standards so that, you know, one applicant may come forward and not feel that they are being favored over somebody else.
So, but the criteria, there's, there's six criteria.
So are you referring to the evaluation criteria?
Review criteria.
The review criteria. So with this section, and this is the last, second to last page. What we did was, at a very high level, for these different proposals that came in, we tried to leave it broad enough where the board at its discretion could weigh the economic benefit or overall benefit to the town, without setting definitive caps or specific performance measures, just because we don't necessarily know what type of applications could come to the town in the future. So what we really tried to do was give certain examples, which this list could be shortened or expanded, as to things the board felt were of high prior enough where it would warrant a fee waiver. So creating jobs, for example, new permanent jobs, or on here's another one, increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing long-term economic benefits to the town. And it would really be upon the applicants to provide the backup documentation to justify that they're eligible and that it will provide a long-term benefit to the town.
Did you draw some of this from other towns who have a policy written?
I did, yes.
So it, it really does set up some criteria that we can then interpret when we see it that fits this criteria, but the important thing is we have rules to follow as opposed to making a healthy, scaly decision based on no rules at all.
That's correct.
The DPW Board, when they're looking at their programs or looking at fee waivers, theirs currently is financially based for the residents.
Yes.
Income-based.
Yes.
So this is not, we're looking, we're broadening that.
Chances are, we may leave that to the DPW, anyway, for the, make their decisions on their own, or we're going to get involved in that?
Oh, no, we're not getting involved. But for the boards that are under us, we want them to be using a similar criteria.
This is a point of clarification.
Yes.
The Board of Assessors is governed by Mass General Law, so that would not be one of the boards that, because again, it's income-based, everything's held in executive session, they have their financials for either abatement or an exemption. So that is the jurisdiction of the Board of Assessors under Mass General Law.
Okay.
So, Chris, the reference to housing in here is basically 100% affordable.
That's correct.
How many applications has the town had where every unit is affordable?
So I think the most recent one, and I don't have the breakdown in front of me, was the Mendez Montero. But prior to that, I am not sure if there's ever been a request for solely affordable housing that's come to this board. But I know that, and it's actually on our agenda later on, you know, we're going to be talking about 40B. And so with that type of development, you have 25%, which is set aside for affordable. So I wanted to make a little bit of a distinction there between, you know, what's called affordable and shared with market rate housing versus something that's solely advancing affordable housing in the community. But again, open to changing that percentage, or?
So my, my first thought is that it's really, I mean, any type of fee reduction, as a percentage of the fees that are charged to the projects, it's not going to sway them to go to 100% affordable in order to save $10,000, obviously. So I'd be up to discussing a change to the 100% on affordable limit for the residential I mean, the good thing is that this will at least give us a pathway. I think you've done a nice job at trying to, trying to get to all the points that, that come in when anyone would, would make the application for a reduction in the fee. Can you, can you explain, Chris, just a little bit about how, the logistics of it? You know, application, you know, how we discussed it earlier?
Sure.
So there's no, just to clarify.
Sure. So if this policy was approved, an applicant would come and they would apply for a permit, and so let's say a building permit. There's the application review fee, which is, I believe, $50. That fee would remain non-refundable. And after that, what happens is it gets approved, and when you go through the workflow step, the permit seeker at that point would be required to pay the remaining balance, and then the permit would be issued. Prior to making that payment, if it was their intent to apply for a fee waiver, they would submit a fee waiver request through our online permitting system, so it's in the same platform as their permit which they're seeking. That request would be sent to the Select Board office. We would review that request based on the criteria within this policy. If we found them to be eligible, we would schedule them for a hearing before the Select Board to discuss a fee waiver. If not, it would be declined at that point in time. We would schedule it for the next meeting, so within a two-week span, based on the Select Board's meeting schedule, and then you would either provide the affirmative and grant the fee waiver or decline. We, as part of that policy, as part of the structure, we would ask them to submit that prior to making any payments to the town, and within the 30-day window, that a building permit has to be reviewed and approved. Couple reasons for that. Number one is, we don't want it to be months and months later, and then them come back to the town, ask for a fee waiver. It's a little bit of a difficult process to reimburse for fees already paid, so if we know that that's their intent upfront, that's why we'd ask them to do that initially. And then with regards to the actual approval itself, you know, if you are approved of fee waiver, it's valid for six months, which typically follows how long a building permit is valid for. So if they let it lapse, you know, their fee waiver would lapse with it.
So I, so I think that something like this may have the ability for us to keep projects competitive. We're not in the business of giving fees away. But in my experience, it's, from the, from the private sector's viewpoint, the fee structure, when it changes, they're not always in the loop. And I think we have to, you know, pay a little bit more attention to the fee levels that are, that are passed by the DPW also. To make sure, you know, we're straddling a competitive line, because we need to make sure that projects that we need in this town to generate the fees and the income that we need to pay the bills, when they consider Dartmouth, we're at least competitive. I don't want to be the lowest guy in the street. I also don't want to be the highest guy in the street, because we're not going to have a bite at that apple when it does come before us. So just a couple of points, just to, we'll need to make sure that the fees that we are assessing, the private sector, are competitive. That's the first order of business. And then use a system like this in order to possibly assist in the affordability of some of the smaller projects. You know, a couple, a couple of the big ones have come before us recently, and those fees have changed in the last couple of years. So there was a little bit of shock factor in some of the size of the projects. They're big projects. We don't get them every day. They're probably one every five, 10 years, something like that. So, you know, they're, they're big numbers, but it's a lot of work to bring them on, and we, the town deserves to get paid for, for the use of the land, so. The only other thing is just the, the percentage of affordable. I don't, I don't think something like this will, is gonna, is gonna swing them to bringing a project online just because of the fee, any type of fee reduction or consideration of it. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
We haven't had 100% affordable housing development since the '70s. We've had two in the town, a Ponigan City Village and Meadowwood. Were both 100% affordable at the time. You've made several good points, and I just, you know, want to make sure that at the same time, we're not giving the fees away. Because it certainly does, there are impacts to the town when these, when these buildings are happening. But at the same time, it's best we have something in, in writing, because I received, you know, kind of a lot of comments after we did waive the fees for the Mendez. Montero project, which, looking at this, fits into this guidance.
Eligibility.
But without having that guidance, there were people calling saying, you waived it for them, can you waive it for me?
And again, even if we went down to 25% on the affordability factor, all that really does is bring it, it makes it become eligible for us to review.
Right.
It is not a, you know.
And if a 40B project went from 10% to 25%, that would also help us.
Right.
If they went to 25% to get the fee waived, it would help us on our.
It would be a consideration in our deliberation for the approval of it, yeah.
So I anticipate that we will look at this, internal conversations with the other either boards or department heads, and it will come back to us by the end of?
We could probably have it for the next meeting. So we'll send this draft policy out.
Two weeks.
Maybe, yeah, maybe the following meeting. Yeah, I'm thinking about timing now.
Maybe June.
Yeah, maybe June. But we will send it out to the applicable departments.
Thank you.
And boards, get their feedback. If there's any suggestions, language changes, we can have another draft available for you at that time.
Thank you for your work on this, Chris.
Anyone have a comment?
Oh, yes, Dave.
The criteria, I understand that the challenge of putting the criteria together because it's, it can be fairly inevitable. It's too wide open. You want to keep it flexible. But I'm just looking at it and half of them, three of the six are pretty subjective, highly receptive to interpretation. Improve the overall quality of life of Dartmouth residents. That could apply to any project there is, I think. And I'm just concerned that it's going to open us up to a much wider scope of consideration as opposed to being a little bit more limiting.
I can certainly word smith.
That would be my.
Yeah, I can certainly word smith it. And if there's maybe a suggestion that conveys that, but sets some sort of threshold.
I would suggest that we take this as is to all the boards.
Sure.
Because we're probably going to get all kinds of ideas on wordsmithing and then we can wordsmith it at the end.
I just, I would approach it with the fact that we do have some pretty open-ended and maybe that's what we'll end up with. But once we get it all back and our consideration, we should consider that as one of the criteria. Do we want it that open-ended, subject to interpretation? Because then we may get into trouble because we interpret in different ways for different projects as well because there's so much latitude.
Well, and looking in this, and we did have the conversation, that people may interpret item number five, create and retain jobs. Oh, I'm creating jobs because we're building this.
Yeah.
But what we really want is.
Longer-term jobs.
Long-term jobs, not during the eight months that they're building the project.
And I'm not critical of the process. I think this is a way to get to it where you end up with the right language. But it may require some tightening up. And I'd certainly be interested in the other departments to have their input as well.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
The next item on our agenda really should be Planning Director Information Session. Dan is coming here to just give us some information. And I will be honest, we have a very big topic of information through the Planning Department and other departments, talking about the various projects. And we kind of took chunks of that. So Dan's before us tonight to do some explaining of things. And then we have also Susan Murphy is here to talk about the 40B project update. Then we'll be talking more about that in May and more at the first meeting in June. So this is a long-term, little bits of eating this elephant. So thank you, Dan, for coming tonight.
Good evening. Daniel Giosa, Planning Director here in town. As was said, we've been having discussions, just kind of seeing what staff in the Planning Department is seeing as far as housing trends are going. The overall trend is for multi-unit, higher-density residential units. Couple ways this happens. Earlier this year, we had an apartment building approved for 64 units that was granted a variance through the Zoning Board of Appeals in a non-residential district. We also have, which was brought up a little while ago for Dartmouth Street, threw a special permit for over 55. We had 89 units that were approved as an apartment complex. Some other things that have come through in a preliminary standpoint, additional over 55 permitting. We have someone that's coming in looking to do duplexes and that kind of setup from that, coming at it from that angle. The majority of calls we receive ask about what we have as an option to do some of these higher-density units. So few things that have been discussed. We do have 40R overlay district that we have used, the Lincoln Park Overlay District. That's something that allows, as of right, higher-density use. One of the benefits of that, you can have 20% be affordable. The town can set guidelines for mixed-use various densities. It can also be other components built into that. So that's something the town can look at as an additional 40R Overlay District. That also falls under what the master plan looks for as far as housing. So that would keep us in line with the overall master plan of the town. One of the newer options that the state has kind of put forward is Chapter 40Y. It's known as a starter home zoning overlay district. This is something, the state hasn't yet released guidance on these, on this statute yet. We have started meetings for the Housing Plan Production Committee, meeting with SERPED. We have brought that up with them. They have been in conversations with the state, but as I said, we don't have any guidelines yet. But that offers another aspect of a way to get higher-density use in. That will require at least four units per acre. As we know now, for a single residence A, you're at $80,000 for one single-family dwelling. Single residence B, you need $40,000 for a unit. So it gives a little bit more. They have maximum sizes. So the house would be maxed out for square footage at 1,850 square feet. So it kind of fits into that starter home community, younger families, people looking to downsize. It has a few other uses. What the benefit of that has is, well, there's a few benefits. It allows, the way they determine affordable housing is by the area median income. Like for 40B, you have to, it's a 80% of the area median income. This 40Y policy will actually allow you to go up to 110% of that. So it gives a little more flexibility on who can qualify for those affordables. Minimum 10% will go affordable into those zoning districts. So I think it's something we really want to look at as we go forward with this housing production plan. We have another meeting scheduled next month. So I think that's something that we in the Planning Department, as well as other departments, are really going to look towards for an option to try to help with these housing concerns here in town. I don't know if you'd like me to kind of answer any questions on that first before we?
Dave?
I've been involved over the last two years directly with the Department of Public Works and with the Chair, Rob Almy, and Tim Barber regarding what we're doing there and also how it affects long-term plans.
Yep.
And I'm still baffled at how we seem to not pay a lot of attention to our capacity for sewer and water, what the future is in the short and the long term, and how that affects these projects to go forward. Some would say that we should stop building now, period, forever until we rebuild the system. Others would say we should have a plan to step it up on a gradual basis. It seems we're not paying attention to any of those. From my point of view, if I'm incorrect, I stand to be corrected. But I'm very concerned that we're trading ourselves into a, into a worse problem than we have because that system's going to take anywhere from three to five years before it's corrected and built, whatever that's going to be, as far as I know. And I'm standing corrected on that. So how do we, how do we proceed this way without putting a head in the sand and just keeping going, whether it be the ZBA or even planning or the DPW?
When we get preliminary calls on these projects, one of the first recommendations I make to them is to talk to the Director at DPW to go over what their capacity concerns may be. Some of these projects, if, like, for example, if they're on Route 6, they're on a parcel where a certain flow was estimated for that parcel. So some of these, that flow is built in to the plan for the sewer facility. Other ones, they've had consultants review, have different things that they do to try to make sure that we are going to be able to adequately take on that existing sewer's flow. So any project, DPW is directly involved with making sure we have the ability to tie these into sewer.
For the short or long term? Are you satisfied with that kind of sequence of events?
We actually had another meeting this afternoon, just trying to talk about the stall water plan and doing assessments and basing those assessments, not unnecessarily zoning as it sits right now, but also to take these multi-unit, higher-density situations into consideration when we're getting proposals for how the sewage system will be able to function going forward. So that is a very important component of how we're looking at this.
Are we doing enough to assemble this group of whoever there's people involved, other departments involved, to make a short and long-term plan that everyone can agree on? Are we doing enough or should we be doing more for that?
We have a meeting at the end of the week with a number of departments. This will be the second meeting that we're talking about water. DPW and Rob Almy will both be there. And we're talking about that, not in regard to specific buildings or specific sites, but in general, where, what do we need and where do we need it? And the issue becomes in talking to developers, if something is needed, a pressurized system on their site, you know, who's funding that? And how do we work that into the plan? So it's not just their ideas of what they're going to do. They are talking and listening to DPW. So we'll be talking more about that at the next few meetings that we have because we're going to have other, these other boards come in as well to talk to us.
Yes, I've actually asked on to a few of these discussions. So we could have this opinion for when people do call to know the direct information.
Am I wrong to say that we need to have a townwide commitment to a short and long-term plan about capacity and about when we're ready to move on? Or do you think we are there okay as we're doing now?
I think that's the point of all these meetings that are taking place right now.
Yeah, David, just to piggyback on that, right? So one of the big things that we were all waiting for last year was the, kind of the future model.
Mm-hmm.
For the capacity going forward, five, 10, 15, 20 years, right? We went to SERPED and asked them to take a look at the open parcels in town, taking into consideration what's available. We don't have a lot left as far as open land goes, but with, you know, the ZBA, we can expect some changes there. So they were tasked through the DPW to try and get their arms around, you know, kind of worst-case scenarios. If we had X, Y, and Z parcel transfer over to affordable housing or something like that, what would the system need? And we've been waiting for that. We finally, I found out today that we finally got that.
That's a future system.
Yes.
I'm talking about the short term until we get to the future as well.
Well, it does contain that.
Yeah, it does, or it should have. It was, we asked them for, even when I was on the Planning Board, we were discussing this.
I know, like, for example, we talked about on Dartmouth Street, their engineer is working with our consultant and the DPW Director to confirm capacity issues, existing infrastructure. So those are being addressed on a case-by-case basis as well.
As we're building.
As it's permitted. Well.
No, as they're building.
Yes. They have just a foundation-only permit.
But I take your point. I think, you know, we'd all be pretty well-served if we had a meeting with Tim, once he has a chance to kind of digest this study from SERPED, to try and figure out exactly what are the facts? There's a lot of rumor around, a lot of, you know, a lot of people discussing capacity in the town for the last year and a half, two years. We need the facts and we need, you know, a view down the road to find out exactly where we are now, where we may have to be. And that dovetails with your long-term Planning Committee also, in how we're going to afford to build out if need be.
And one of the items, like I said, was capacity as zoning shows now and also capacity if we do start seeing more of these higher-density.
The DPW has plans right now for up to about $3 million, just to get us through the short terms until the long-term plan, whatever that's going to be, is going to be effective. So we're trying to keep the system going until that time. So my concern is, I think it, I think this takes a townwide perspective, is the short and long-term capacity, well, short-term especially, is what do we do about these kinds of projects and plans and how do we do it? So I don't mean to be repetitive, I'd go on with it, but I think it's really important.
So interesting you brought this conversation about, do we stop all building? Well, that's another question. Do we have a moratorium on large, high-density buildings or proposals? Do we need to do that to ensure that we do protect our system? That's only just the water now in sewer. But, you know, you have other things. You have high-density projects that are being proposed. What is the, what would it do to our road systems, to our schools? Some of these projects are overwhelming and they're going to be feeding into small roads, Tucker Road, Slocombe Road. They're not large roads.
Right. And this is why we're going to have this conversation and we're going to be inviting ZBA because the aha moment is also the fact that, once you come in with a multi-unit and you say the magic 40B, it takes everybody out of the process and right to 40B. I mean, right to ZBA. The other issue is the moratorium word. What that does is it makes people perhaps look at parcels of land in Dartmouth and say, before there is a moratorium, let me get my work in. We cannot, we are not in a place where we can say that we're stopping the building in Dartmouth. That would be a discussion that we'd have with beyond Dartmouth, with the state and the overseers of our water treatment facility. Really, it's a big DPW piece. So, but I think in talking to these boards as we go forth, and again, next meeting we're going to have some, and the June meeting we're going to have, we're going to be inviting ZBA, it's to just find out where we can and where we cannot have a little more input at the start.
I don't want to wake up one morning and find out we're over the top and gee, what do we do now?
Well, Stanley.
And allow all, excuse me.
In my opinion, if we got to that.
Finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and not allow people to speak up against some of these large, high-density areas. That is going to put a tremendous responsibility on this town. And again, not just sewage and water, schools, roads.
I think that's why we need to be proactive and be creative with our zoning.
Moratorium is a way.
To allow for, it doesn't really help us with if people are doing 40Bs because that goes under comprehensive permit law and that waives some of those requirements. So.
But not all of them.
Not all of them, but.
I think that we can be seen as alarmist if we use the M-word. You know, that word's very dangerous, in my opinion, because what it does do is it does force the analysts into Dan's office. And it does get development off their heels and on the balls of their feet, trying to get these plans in. We've had, I think, the last two or three annual reports, there were no alarm bells going off. We had the DPW approving the septic to sewer with no problem. We've got 64 units approved with no problem, as long as the check cleared. So, you know, I get it. Work has to be done. But we have to take the time and we do have to.
I think the Chair has the right idea that we, meeting with all these pertinent groups, come up with a comprehensive plan for the short and long term.
And we're making sure that they're talking to each other as well.
I think it's great.
Which is key. Dan, when we Dan, when we met, there were, I think, two other things that you were going to talk about? A recent project?
Oh, um, one, one thing I was, I was hoping to discuss, which I know was discussed with this board for, for a few meetings, had to do with the architectural design guides by the, through, through the site plan review regulations. Um, I know there was a recent project, um, I'm not sure what the opinions are of the individual board members, um, but that project was not denied by the planning board. There was a special permit granted for that job. They were before site plan review. They were working through, um, some items with a few different boards, a few different departments. We had a meeting, um, there were questions raised about the architectural standards. It was advised by the archi, to the architect to take a look at them. He hadn't looked at the architectural guidelines yet, um, to review those, see if he could come back, see if there's anything they could work with, with their national model for their structure. And I spoke with the engineer a few days later, kind of talked about a few different options, things they could do. And then a few days after that, um, we got a letter saying they were going to, um, not, not pull it, withdraw, there you go, withdraw the application. So I kind of wanted to, I'm here tonight, I was hoping maybe if the board had any questions, I could try to answer them for you, um, here in person.
Dan, I mean, just for the mere fact that the, that the architectural was brought up, I'm sure that, that, I'm sure that was a red flag, um, to the, to, you know, the business owner. And they were, you know, that they had, that they were going to, you know, have to try to change the way their, you know, their building was going to look to fit into the New England architectural system, um, where it doesn't exist anywhere on Farnes Corner Road. I mean, you know, I don't know why it was brought up, um, and it just seemed, it just seemed to be basically telling the developer, look, this is what we're going to be looking at, you know, and, I mean, they're building directly across the street from a concrete jail, you know, and they're, they're next door to, you know, a concrete warehouse, which is across the street from a concrete manufacturing or brick-and-mortar manufacturing, not really New England, you know, if, if you look at it. And I think, I think that discussion was probably interpreted by the architecture and the owners to say, you know, we want you to change what the building looks like and when, you know, you have a national brand who are rolling out a specific type of building so that, you know, that national brand could be seen from Phoenix, Arizona, to Peoria, Illinois, to Poe Dunk, Kentucky, you know, the same type of building, um, you know, and after they put in all that kind of money, you know, just to have the, you know, the building denied because it didn't look New England enough.
Again, it wasn't denied, it was asked to be reviewed.
I know it wasn't denied, but it was.
Just, just for an example, just, I think everybody sees the new Chick-fil-A's going up. So Chick-fil-A was asked to do the same review. Basically, all they did was differentiate some roof heights, change, change some feature along the, the foundation edge. That was it. That was all the planning board was looking for. So it's still gonna, you're gonna drive by, it's still gonna look for, like a Chick-fil-A. It's the same thing, it's still a national brand that they're looking for. So the, the planning board is willing to, to, to work with the architects on these issues. There's a whole guide that's listed for different features they can use. It doesn't have to, it's not like going to the islands where they have a very specific brand. There are, there are guidelines that are online, different things they could work with. Like I said, some items were discussed with the engineer for possible scenarios to come back and to discuss with the board, um, to see what, what it would be there. So going, going forward, I would just like, the people that are coming forward to know that.
Any of that discussion is also time and money that they have to spend in, in trying to figure out what, you know, what is, what is agreeable, you know, and if they come up with a design and, which meets some of the code and then all of a sudden they get, you know, to, to show it, and then they're going to say, well, no, that's, you know, there's the possibility of it being in favor or not in favor. And then that, if, and then they go sent back to the drawing board.
But they haven't gotten to that point.
Well, I mean, they've already, my, I had heard they had already spent up to a half a million dollars in planning and, and going through all sorts of fees, and now that money is gone because they stopped, they stopped the project.
Ms. Brooks?
You know, and I, I, I just don't, you know, I, I just don't. In listening to, in listening to that meeting where it was brought up, it was clear to me that they were sending a signal to change the way the building looks. And I don't think that's what is needed, especially in that area. If they were putting a building in the middle of, of Payden Aaron Village, okay, I understand that. Farnes Corner Road, no, I don't understand that at all.
And there is a, a caveat in the, in the regs that say architectural design shall be compatible with the character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood. So there is flexibility. I can't speak for each individual board member, obviously, but there, there is flexibility in there, um, and the board has expressed through various other projects. Some of the other projects in town, you probably wouldn't even really notice the different things that they did to, to, to make those modifications to be in compliance with that regulation. So I just, I just want people that might be looking at it, want to come in with a building, we are, the board is willing to work with you. It is not a set-in-stone guideline. There are many different aspects that, of little tweaks that can be done through windows, through roof lines, um, through other different things, so.
I mean, when they first come in, okay, because I know this went to technical review, and the initial, the initial point where they wanted to go was to be on Route 6. And they were told in that technical review that there's a better place for it, which is on Farnes Corner Road. The question that I have is when they come in, is, is the architectural integrity or the architectural, you know, is it brought up right away? Because to me, it wasn't brought up right away. It was brought up after they spent, you know, all this money on plans and whatnot, and then all of a sudden it's, hey, by the way, you know, here's, we're reviewing your site plan, but here's some architectural stuff that you kind of need to take a look at because your building isn't quite New England. Because basically it was, it was, you know, silver and glass.
Right.
For all intents and purposes, because it's a showroom. It's a car showroom.
Exactly, and so I don't think you'd be looking, like I said, I can't speak for each individual board member, but I don't think that's what they were necessarily looking for. I never saw any presentation on Route 6, so I can't speak on that either, but.
This is what we were told.
Yeah, I, I never saw that presentation.
I don't think you were here at the time.
Or even through the engineering office, I didn't see it.
I don't know, it, it's just, you know.
It's, it's some, I just want to, it's something that we can work, that we can work with.
Yeah, I, I think if, if it's going to be brought up, it should be brought up, like, right away and not.
And it, like I said, if it, if it comes before a technical reviewers meeting, that is something that can be discussed. Here's the guidelines, here's where you can find them, if you have any questions on it.
Yeah, because we had, we had the opportunity to clean up a really.
Yeah, like I said, I did, I did speak, I did, after that meeting, I did speak with their engineering representative and we did talk about it. I was planning that they were going to be at the next meeting, and then we got a letter with withdrawal.
Mr. Talabom?
I think it, it is a much bigger issue here. Uh, we have a limited amount of space in town that are going to, going to take on this kind of sized project. When this kind of project comes along, this technical review, I think someone has to look at it from a bird's eye view and say, okay, what's been the timeline? How long's it going to go? This, this particular project, because of its size and possibilities, requires a little tender loving care. How long's it been? What kind of cooperation? We don't know what really went on with, uh, planning, or I know this conservation was involved. It's that, we, we'll never know the details, nor, nor should we, it's not our job. How do we treat that customer? How long did it take? Were we reasonable in what's it going to take to get it done? Or is it just not going to happen? And, and this thing took one on forever and, and, and then it disappeared. And I don't think we, we paid attention to the timeline, not planning, I'm not pinning any particular individual, but maybe there's someone who's in charge of technical review that could be, say, okay, I don't know how that works. Who's in charge? How long's it take? And how are we going to make, get this done so that it doesn't lag and the customer's treated fairly?
A lot of times, items that we get for technical review, after that, we never see them again.
Exactly.
So it, it's, it could be just a feeler that somebody puts out. It might be something that somebody's interested in buying but doesn't have any, any purchase and sale or anything.
Maybe each technical review, it could be someone from the department, I'll take this one, I'll watch the timeline, I'll make sure it's going to work. The next one, someone else can take it. But there's someone's got to be in charge to say, how is it going? Are we being reasonable? Do we need to get other people involved? And I, I'm going to guess that that did not happen with this. It got out of hand and maybe the, maybe the developer was completely wrong. I don't know the answer, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, like I said, I can't speak on some of those other issues. I just want to, want to put that out there.
Something I think we should consider.
And Dave, you know, different parcels have different issues.
Of course they do.
You, you've definitely got some different issues out there.
Yeah.
And, and they had, they had a bunch of them.
We're still dealing with items in at least three other departments.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I think.
More reason to have a supervised approach.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you know, from what, from what I watched and, and from what I saw, it was going as well as I think it could go, you know, with some of the issues.
If you had asked me, I would have thought it would have been approved the next meeting, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm not abdicating for the owner. I don't know who he is or what happened. Or were they reasonable or not? I don't know.
And this is all coming, this is all us talking about, our side of the deal.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then their side of the deal.
Of course.
Obviously, they had some issues going on.
My, my office, we're very willing, we tell everybody, you got any questions, come in.
But, but that's not enough because you're only one department.
But, but just to gen.
We also coordinate with other departments.
Okay.
So, so we have that.
Just a general comment, though, on, on the meeting that I saw about the architectural design, or not even the design, but just recommendations, I guess, that the engineer never even considered it. You know, it, it's in there, but he just never considered it. And I think that was kind of, it perturbed Kevin a little bit, I think, and rightly so. You know, when the engineers come in, as you know, I mean, you would always consider that because you know the bylaws. Some, sometimes you get, you get outside firms that, that don't read that well into it. You know, I, I always look to one example. When you're on Crossroad and you look over at the Walmart, all you're going to see are AC units, condenses along that roof line and the, uh, loading area in the back of that building, you know, if, if that would have, if that would have come up from that viewpoint, um, I don't know what they call them, false turrets or false walls that they put on the, I think that's what they did at Chick-fil-A. They, they brought the false wall up. You would, you would have hid all that from, from Crossroad. That, it's a very small element to it, but it makes a big difference.
And that's why it's in there, just, just to have some oversight, so it's nothing.
Right.
That's drastically not in compliance.
So, so the point is well-taken, Dan. May, maybe, you know, obviously going forward, you're, you know, in your position with technical review, it'll be one of the checkoff points to say, you know, do we consider the.
Yeah, any, any commercial property going forward now that it's been raised, it's something that can be, kind of, everybody kind of goes around and says, this is what we think. It's, it's kind of, it's, a lot of the technical reviewers, it's a real basic plan. So it's like, what do you think's going to be, what, what hurdles could I be having? Sewer.
Yeah.
DPW might say, you're going to have issues with capacity. Traffic safety, they might talk about traffic safety issues that you have to consider. We can bring up, make sure you, you've reviewed the, the architectural guidelines. So that's something we can, we can definitely make a point of, of interest when they do come in for any commercial properties.
We don't have that many, we got to, got to take care of it.
No, I, I agree.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, because it's dead and you're not going to salvage it. But there's a lot of chatter on the street because of that, and it wasn't good, and it's still not good.
Well, I think, and I, I think that's, that's my kind of point in here.
That's why Dan is here tonight to tell us that.
Come and talk with us. We can, we can work with other departments, we can have those discussions.
Permits were never denied.
Everywhere.
So if that's on this, out there, that is a falsehood.
And I, and I tried talking, the day after it was found out, I talked to other departments. I was kind of a little surprised, to be honest with you, that it had been withdrawn, so I tried doing a look into it.
Maybe there's something going on behind the scenes that we didn't.
Yeah, that I can't speak of, but any issues that we can try to address internally in Town Hall, we want to work to, to address those issues.
Thanks. And technical review is something that we're going to be talking about again because when we look at economic development, that's a key to have that group and those individuals looking at what's available, either it's empty storefronts or land, and what can we attract? And at the same time, looking at that in, you know, what, what we've discussed earlier is these fee waivers and fees and what can we have, you know, what do we want to attract? Do we want to attract, uh, a car dealership or multi-unit housing, which has the impact on the infrastructure? And we have to be more thoughtful in what we're doing. So this is the first of several times we're going to see you, Dan, so thank you for coming in.
Great.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, send them my way.
We will.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next to the parade here is Susan Murphy, who is our new counsel to talk to us about the 40B projects, or just a couple of them right now. So welcome, Susan.
Yes, thank you, thank you for having me. I think I met you all for the first time over Zoom about five or six weeks ago, so it's, it's nice to be here in person.
We only saw your head.
As you know, I've, I've been working most closely with, um, your assistant town administrator, Chris Vitale, over the, um, on the projects that have started coming in. But I came here tonight because I understood you wanted an update and if, Madam Chair, if there's a particular way you want me to jump in or preference.
Give us an address and a project and then tell us what you know.
Okay, so let me, let me tell you what I've done in the last five or six weeks and since I first, um, met you. And so I have been talking regularly. I, I got off the kind of ground with Attorney Savastano, Chris Vitale, we had a number of conversations to kind of get the ball rolling. There was a pending, uh, request for comments as you discussed at your last hearing, and that was for a, a project that's known as Sherbrook, that's on Old, um, Westport Road. And there's a, there was, the site visits are being done by the staff, so I'm not attending the site, uh, the site visits with Mass Housing Finance Agency, which is the subsidizing agency. So it's one of the agencies of the state that can review, uh, proposed projects and then issue what's known as site eligibility letters. So that, once those applications go into the state agency, they contact the community, they schedule a site visit, and then the community has the opportunity to look at what's really very, usually very preliminary, uh, proposal, um, information about the project and then provide comments. There's a 30-day comment period, sometimes you can get in stack, extensions, in this case, the town did get an extension. It expired, I believe it was last Wednesday.
Thanks, Sarah.
And put all those comments together and send them out and hope that the subsidizing agency, in this case, Mass Housing, will, uh, you know, take those into account. You know, you're probably aware that it's, it's like a unicorn to find a project that a subsidizing agency does not issue a site eligibility letter to. So the, the goal is really to start as early as possible and to try to identify what, there's a term in the regulations, local concerns, um, and identify those and, and hopefully, and sometimes often, Mass Housing will say, you know, the town, the municipality has identified this particular issue, you know, please work with them on this or that. They don't tell them they have to do something, they can't do something, but at least it's the town putting major concerns or, uh, on, on the record from the get-go, um, as opposed to just throwing stuff at projects after they come to the zoning board. So, um, the, the various departments, DPW, Conservation, um, uh, you know, DPW through water and sewer and stormwater, also traffic, um, fi, the fire district, a number of your departments, uh, and health submitted their comments, um, to Mr. Vitale. He and I worked on a cover letter and, which then highlighted the issues in those memos plus other, other information that he identified and he and I talked about, and then produced the letter that went out on April 30th. I believe the board got a copy of. I believe the board got a copy of that. So now that's with Mass Housing. They review, they don't just review whether the site itself is appropriate. They also need to look at financial information, which the town doesn't have a role and has no legal right to be reviewing financial information, all of that. And it usually takes them a couple of months. It could be, you know, one month, it could be three months before they'll issue a site eligibility letter. So for the time being, that project is with the state agency and the town now just waits and sees. There was an invitation, well, this is directed to, obviously, Mass Housing, but the, that is provided by Mass Housing to the applicant. And there are a number of invitations here for the applicant to come in and meet with staff, whether it's technical review, if they have questions about the comments on water and sewer. Obviously, the more communication, the better on these projects. And how, how much a particular applicant is, is willing to do that, it varies from project to project and developer to developer. So, so that's where that project stands right now. I don't know if, if you'd like me to pause for a minute there if anyone has any questions about Sherbrooke.
I do.
Okay.
So on, one question would be for the developer. Is it, should the developer wait until they get Mass Housing letter? Or should the, the developer continue and come into a technical review meeting and hear from the different boards?
Well.
Or is it on them?
It's on them. I mean, it's a, that's right, should, it would, it would be not, right? The more they communicate, then the better the project. Communication is always better for any project, any, anything that anyone's working on. So, I mean, they're encouraged to, but they're not required to. And if they, so if they don't, it's, it's not, it doesn't necessarily reflect poorly that they're a, you know, you know, that there is something difficult or anything about them, they're not required to do it. It's just an invitation for them to do so.
Question?
Yes, sorry, Dave.
Thank you. Your response with Mr. Vitale seemed pretty comprehensive and detailed. You've done many of these before.
Yeah, so.
My question is,
Yep.
how do you rate our comments versus their design in terms of the, the actual possibility this may become a project based on the level of our response? Is that a fair question?
If I understand your, your question, I, I think I go back to they are likely to get a site eligibility letter from the state agency. Whether or not they, based on the comments, are, you know, will tweak the project or whether they'll say, hey, we're going to apply with what we, we want to do, what we showed Mass Housing. And then maybe, depending on how the hearing goes, maybe we'll be willing to tweak it. I mean, there's just, there's just no way to know.
I guess, just for my own clarification, you're saying they're probably going to get a, going to get a approval for the project, whether or not some of the elements we included may or not be included, that's, that's what's going to, that's the test of time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
I got a question.
Oh, sorry, Stan.
So you mentioned something about financial and there was not within our scope to, to ask questions about the financial aspects of it all?
That's correct.
So is that, is that the, the developer's financial ability to, to, to perform? And do they, do they do Mass Housing, I guess? Do they get involved in, I don't know, vetting out these, these organizations, these companies?
Yeah, so one of the, so I have the Chapter 40B regulations. One of the submissions that the applicants required to make to Mass Housing is an initial pro forma that includes land valuation, the project's financial feasibility, and then also they look at, you know, the financial underpinnings of the applicant. So that's something that the state agency is tasked with doing.
And how detailed is that? I mean, have you seen?
I, I've, I've seen them. They, they do, they have, there's, there are guidelines and application materials that the state, so there's, there's EOHLC, formerly known as DACD. There's Mass Housing, Mass Housing Partnership. They're the three main subsidizing agencies for the state. And they usually work together and they put together, you know, application policies and guidelines. So there's pretty detailed information that they have to provide. You know, there, there's aspects of it that I think municipalities have always and will continue to take issue with. But, you know, the Massachusetts Court, the Supreme Court has said, that's, that's not the town's business. It's, that's between the subsidizing agency and, and the developers. And, and so that is part of their, the analysis that they do.
But Mass Housing isn't usually operating on our best interest. They're operating on the developer's best interest.
I, I don't know, I, I don't know that it's fair to say, they're the state agency that's charged with reviewing applications in order to, you know, promote the building of affordable housing through Chapter 40B. You know, so I, I don't, I don't know that it's fair to say that they're looking out for the developer's best interest. They're looking out for moving forward as many projects and as many communities as they can and that reads as doing, you know, in the best interest of the developers. But I, I don't think that's fair to say. I think they, they take their, their jobs seriously and it, it's just that, that's their mission, right? Is to see these projects developed.
I must disagree, but I'll, I'll agree to disagree.
I think there was just some information that was sent out from the governor's office of a number of housing units that she has asked be constructed within Massachusetts by, I believe, 2030. So if I look at that statement and look at the purpose of Mass Housing, Mass Housing Partnerships and the other acronym I missed, then who they're looking out for is who will reside in those, offering enough of housing.
Yes, that's, you said it, you said it better than I did. Thank you.
No guarantees. Chris O'Neil.
Susan, kind of dovetailing off what Stanley had mentioned. In your experience, have the subsidizing agencies denied particular applicants? I mean, I would assume that this is pretty, a pretty small world. You know, there are only so many players that know the rules within Massachusetts for subsidized housing and apply multiple times. In your experience, have, have any of them been denied applications because they couldn't continue on with the project? Couldn't finish a project? Fell down during the project?
Yeah, so I, I can tell you that I, I am familiar because there is a, a developer who has done projects in a number of South Shore communities. And they did one in one community where, you know, the way the financials work is they have profit limitations. And after they finish the project, they have to submit all the financial documentation to the subsidizing agency. And if they've exceeded their profit limitation, money is supposed to go back to the community. And there's a community that they owe money, that they have not paid the money, and it's been years. That same developer is, has a project pending in an adjacent town. And the subsidizing agency has said, you will not get, so after the ZBA issues its permit, then it has to go through whatever other paces. It goes back to the subsidizing agency, who has to issue a final approval. They've been told they are not going to get final approval to start building in another community if they haven't fulfilled their financial obligations to that first community. So they do, they do hold their feet to the fire on those obligations. So I, that's a, that's the most recent example that I, I've seen. They were also, in addition to that, until they meet those obligations, that those, the principles of that company have been suspended from applying for anymore.
That was a couple of years ago, right? There was, there was one suspension.
Rightfully so.
Right, right. So that's why I'm saying, I, yes, as, as, as you've all said, it is the goal of the administration of the state to have a number of housing units. But there, they are, they, they're not letting bad actors just run wild in the building of these.
I'll tell you, that was one of the concerns that I had. Because as you know, I mean, LLCs are LLCs. You can, you can, you know, hide under a multitude of different types of organizations and if there is a track record, we're going to rely on you to keep an eye on those, on the state and the subsidizing authorities to make sure that the projects that do come into town are brought in by reputable organizations. They're going to start it, they're going to finish it, you know, and make sure that we get a good project out of it. Especially if we don't have much of a say in it.
Right. And to, and to the extent that those types of issues come up, those are the ones that I had stated that, you know, the state law has put under the jurisdiction and the responsibility of the subsidizing agencies. So in the, in the example that I gave you, because I represent the town where the other project is potentially pending, there were letters written to, and that one's subject to litigation, et cetera. There were letters and emails written to and gotten from Mass Housing as part of it saying, what's, you know, what's the story with these guys and it was submitted. So there's a little bit of bird dogging that has to be done. You don't necessarily control that piece of it, can't control that piece of it. But if you are kind of bird dogging it, you can flag it, right? And the more you flag it, and it's potentially, you might flag something that maybe had not yet come to the intention of subsidizing agency. So it's definitely something worth being, you know, aware of as projects come in and progress. Okay.
Dave?
Question?
Sure.
Thank you. Dovetailing on our previous discussion regarding sewer treatment and capacity. How important is that an issue, a legitimate concern for a town on capacity and facing these kind of projects?
Okay, so, I, I mean, that's a good question. And, and I was very interested in coming when I was talking to Chris earlier and he told me that there was going to be the discussion with Dan. I said, okay, well, I'm going to make sure I'm there for that because hearing all of that, kind of, the more I understand about the big picture of what's going on in the town, the more helpful I can be in, you know, working on these comment letters and working with your staff in the ZBA. In fact, I had a Zoom meeting this morning with the department heads of all your major departments just because we had been working quickly to get the first one out. But now going forward, I figured we can put names with faces and, and we can work together. So I, I know, needless to say, I noticed and it was called out as a significant issue in the Sherbrooke comment letter about needing more data from the developer about the capacity needs of those projects. Knowing that this is, there's bigger conversations happening and this is something that the town is watching, I did make some notes based on that conversation and I'll, I'll circle back with Chris and your other staff to kind of get a better picture of that. Because there, there's two aspects of it. The first one is you can't treat a 40B, which they refer to as subsidized projects. So a 40B project differently than you would treat an, you know, a non-subsidized or a full market rate project. So, you know, Dan mentioned that there were just a couple of apartment buildings approved. They were smaller, you know, significantly smaller than the 40Bs that are being proposed. But it becomes a question of, well, if, if you can approve them, why can't you approve the 40B? So there, it, there has to be some careful evaluation of, are they being treated differently unfairly compared to other types of projects? Another piece of it is, and I'll, and I'll give simple examples because I don't know the full extent of the capacity issues or the, you know, the infrastructure issues yet in Dartmouth, although I'm going to read that report that you mentioned, is if there's something simple, like there's only a two-inch water line in this street, but to, to serve their project, you need an, it's going to need an 80-inch water line. Well, that clearly is a off-site improvement, infrastructure improvement that is directly needed because of their project, right? That's a simple one. If you have an issue of, oh, wait a minute, and I don't know if this is your issue, so I'm just using a hypothetical. If you have an issue that, oh, our water treatment plant is on the fritz and needs major upgrades and all of that, and we want you to donate towards that, well, that's something that the courts have found, that's, that's a town problem. That's not this 40B developer's problem. And they have profit limitations and there's all these calculations to determine whether or not the, the project is uneconomic or not and you may or may not be able to require them to contribute to something major like a treatment plan. So that's why the more information that is available, and it sounds like, you know, something like this report and all the other conversations that's going on, the more information that's available to be able to point Mass Housing and ultimately, when you're in front of the ZBA and in the unfortunate circumstance, if you end up in appeals, that you can point to, look at all of this documentation and reports that we have. We're not just making this up because we don't like that particular project in that location. We show, we can show you all this documentation, research, report that is showing you. And yes, a 60-unit project may not create problems, but a 260-unit in this particular location with this infrastructure may. So that's going to be really important. And the more information that, that, the town's able to document and, you know, I, I'm going to talk to Chris about how best to, you know, consolidate all that information, maybe you have it all consolidated somewhere in order to make that case at the front end, is, is going to be important.
I think it's.
I don't know if that answered your question, but it's a complicated question.
It's a little frustrating for me because we're, we're, we're three to four years away from spending 50 to 75 million dollars
Okay.
on just a sewer project alone, legit. I can see where towns fake their way through. They can talk about water lines and all that. We legitimately have to save, we have to rebuild or, or tear down the existing project, the existing facility. It seems to me that this should be, as soon as we can, with the best data we can, include that in presenting this to these different projects because it would seem to me, from my own naive perspective, is it's a showstopper for them because we have a legitimate need to replace the project. And I think that, I think as soon as we can get that number together, we have a test going, we have some surveys going, and then we're going to have also the, the actual design of the new facility. It may take a year for that, but there's a process going on right now. And as soon as we can get the handle on that and present it to these, these, these developers, I think the better off we're going to be.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And, and we had a little bit of a shortened timeline, even though we, we did, I think, a pretty robust letter. We had a little bit of short time in getting the letter out last week. We now have about three and a half weeks till the next letter goes out. And I do think, I, I was sitting here thinking, making notes to myself to remember for tomorrow and follow up with Chris, that I think if we could even put together a page or two that has all of the projects that are, that you have, the Preserve is under construction. You have Sherbrooke, you have Hawthorne Country Club, which is the one we haven't talked about yet. There's a potential local initiative program, LIP, project that's interested in working with the town. You have the two projects Dan just talked about. I, I think putting together some information to show, for the, you know, the ZBA to have readily at hand for showing, talking to developers, but also getting to Mass Housing and showing the amount of commitment that the town already has. You just approved two apartment building projects and the volume that's coming in. I think that's really important to show because, you know, Dartmouth has been working really hard. I mean, I walked in and you were, you were congratulating someone for all the efforts that they're making and finding housing for people. And I, I think it's, it's important, and maybe it's already done and I'm still getting caught up, to kind of document all of the efforts that the town has been making towards housing.
May 15th, we will have that. We have a, a shortlist right now in front of me, which came, but we're going to be working with all the departments, so ZBA being a, a big one, on where are these projects? Where are they in their approval phase? And if they're already in construction, where are they in their construction phase? So at what point in time will they be looking for occupancy permits? So we're going to have, that's our goal for May 15th, to have a very comprehensive list, which just for the boards will also include Lincoln Park project, which is not complete and an eyesore. So, you know, that may be something, you know, is another comment for, you know, at what point do we let technical review chase someone to finish their project or create?
Right.
Make the eyesore.
Right. And I, and I don't want to, I don't want to have. And I don't want to have not answered Mr. Tadlebaum's question, because I understand his frustration. But it's kind of, it was as I was saying, just saying that you know you have a major project coming in the next few years, and it's going to cost tens of millions of dollars. That's the type of project where a subsidizing agency is going to be, well, that's not just because of this project. It's a town-wide issue, and you can't put it on that 40B developer. But it's important for them to understand the scope of the amount of, the number of projects you're coming in, the number of units that are going to come online, and what the short-term and long-term impacts are. It's important to get that information out there from the beginning, and then see where we can bring it. I think we're still in a kind of, not wait and see, but we've got to be following all this on parallel tracks.
You've got a lot of work to do. Thank you.
All right, Susan, the next project.
So, the next one, which there is a request for comments, is at the Hawthorne Country Club. The Sherbrooke is a proposed 156 rental units. Hawthorne is proposed as 147 home ownership. So, that would result in 25% or 37 affordable homes. There was a site visit, I believe, was it last week or in the last week or two, there was a site visit. As I mentioned, I did not attend the site visit. The comment letter on that is due May 30th. As I said, we did have a, you know, a brief Zoom meeting, just kind of face to names, let the staff know kind of this is kind of after our experience doing Sherbrooke of, this is the type of information it's helpful to get. You know, the sooner we get it, the more complete, Chris and my review can be and the better the letter can be that we're writing. So, that's the next step on Hawthorne. Hawth, I'm sorry.
Hawthorne, that's all right. Plus, it's getting late.
Hawthorne, it's getting late. Thank you. And then, the next one, which I'm just aware is percolating out, and that may have been for a while, is the potential local initiative program 40B on Hathaway Road. That one, from what I've seen, and I've just seen a little bit of information on it, is a potential 289, I believe, rental units. You know, the difference, and I don't want to, I don't want to talk about things that the board may already know, so stop me if I'm, you know, telling you things you know. But a typical 40B, it's the developer goes to the subsidizing agency, as they're doing now that we just talked about on Sherbrooke and Hawthorne. On Hathaway, those are ones where a developer comes to the town and says, I want to do this project in your town and work kind of with you on it. Then they have to work with the select board. The select board has to be in agreement with it. And then the select board and the developer apply jointly to, the agency is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, that's EOHLC. That's the one I said too fast before. It used to be known as DHCD, changed the name a couple of years ago. And then, then EOHLC issues the project or site eligibility letter. I mean, what's nice about those is it's the town kind of doing it hand in hand. And so, because the developer is coming and working with the town and needs the select board buy-in, then you're more likely to get a project that you feel is appropriate for the site and fits in with the community. So, that one's still out there. I don't have a lot of information on that one. I don't know when, if it's moving forward.
We will know more May 19th.
I'm sorry?
We will know more May 19th.
Okay. So, you're way ahead of me on a lot of stuff, but I'm getting caught up as quickly as I can. So, those are the projects, at least, that I've been asked to advise as needed on. But I didn't know if there's any other aspects of these projects of 40B that you had any other questions for.
I think from, Chris, go ahead.
Just one quick, well, I don't know if it's quick. Hopefully, it's quick. It came out today. 40R, and this is just a general question. 40R, if the, if there's a change in the development after a year or two, or economies change, financing changes, who do you have to get buy-in in order to get the developer in the town to agree on a change with a 40R?
What do you mean by who?
So, if it was mixed use, the agreement was, the 40R was mixed use, housing's been built, commercial has not, because of whatever reason. In that, and the developer wants to change that commercial side of the project. How does that happen? Do you know?
Well, I mean, I didn't necessarily come with all my 40R.
All right, no problem. So, it's a question.
I mean, I think, right, it depends on how comfortable the community is with it and the process they went through with the project. I mean, once you create the 40R district, and you state what uses are allowed and what areas of the district, or mixed use, or it's very 40R district-specific. So, I, without having enough information, I'd be happy to, I'm happy to look at that question. I just don't want to give you an answer and then find out, I don't know, I didn't know something about the district or the project, and then I've given you the wrong answer.
We'll get to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Susan, thank you. This was very, very detailed, and I think for me, very helpful to know how impactful that letter, the comment letter, really needs to be all-encompassing of every department's concerns in order for us to feel like we've set our piece, and going forward, this is what we're expecting the developer to address.
Right. It's like I said, I don't know how much the subsidizing agency, in this case, it's Mass Housing for both of these. I don't know how much of that they'll grab and even reference in their letter. But I always believe that the earlier that the town can articulate those, and the applicant knows it's out there and it's coming, the better it is. If the application's already with the ZBA in the middle of hearings, and you've got a clock ticking, it's always harder to try to, especially if they're still in kind of design phase. The earlier you get to them, you know, hopefully, the better. So, thank you all. It was nice to meet you all in person.
Susan, thank you very much for coming in. All right. The next item on the agenda, I wish we were the hiring authority on this one so that we could reject this letter. But we have before us a letter from Tim Lancaster, written directly to the board members of Park and Recreation. And I want to take a minute because I think it is so well captures the totality of his position. I am going to, you're going to have to indulge me because the mic is mine, and I'm reading it in. So, dear board members, over the past two and a half decades, we have worked as a team to renovate all of our facilities, construct new park sites, and expand recreational opportunities for all. From the development of the Summer Concert Series, self-sustaining year-round recreation programming, and to the implementation of a successful concession operation at the Bucket and soon-to-be Round Hill Beach, this department has continued to grow and improve. It is extremely rewarding to drive through the town and see the difference we have made, improvements that will last long after we have all moved on. Our secret is simple. While government historically operates on paths dependent on tax dollars, we looked at financial obstacles, adapt, and overcome. Our think outside the box mentality has allowed us to better our services, expand our opportunities, address increased facility usage, and protect our resources. For example, when faced with overwhelming pressure from the federal, state, and local officials to damage our town's most cherished gem and potentially put our residents at risk, we stood strong and saved the most sought-after treasure for generations of Dartmouth families. Round Hill Beach, now safely designated as a public parkland and under the control of DPR, will remain protected, an achievement some said was not possible. While most will never realize the fights we have undertaken on their behalf, those of us involved on a daily basis understand what would have occurred without the efforts of everyone on this team. The ability to operate this department with two full-time people, which the second person is only a recent hire, supported by a staff of 60 seasonal employees, has become a model for other departments and municipalities. The term "do more with less" has been our motto for years. 26 years ago, we maintained five properties on a seasonal basis. Today, we operate or maintain 28 sites around, year-round, including the oversight of several municipal buildings and town cemeteries. Additionally, along the way, we reduced our demand on the tax levy and self-funded every recreation program in town, then went a step further and expanded those opportunities. Further, we took a cemetery system that operated in the red financially with limited records, and created a system that now works in the black with a standard set of rules and regulations for all to follow. The 22-year-old kid that many said couldn't do the job is now approaching 50, and can honestly say he proved every one of them wrong and then some. The road has been trying and difficult. It seems we have had a fight every inch of the way to make Dartmouth a better place, but have always succeeded. I'd be remiss to say that I could not have done this without your support, and of course, that of the program coordinator. He goes on to talk about Becky. As they say, all things, good things must come to an end. For me, that time has come. It was with a heavy heart that I must say goodbye to you and the work I have cherished for over half my life. I am notifying you of my intention to resign from this position of Superintendent of Parks/Director of Recreation, effective July 1, 2025. I will remain available to you during any transition period and any time thereafter if you or the department needs anything at all. It's been an adventure, to say the least, and I look forward to seeing you at all the concerts this summer. Again, if you need anything, feel free to reach out. Tim is not going off into the sunset. He has recently been appointed as Fire Chief of District 1 to take over when Peter Andre retires at the end of June. So, this is a great, you know, meets Tim's passion for the fire department, and he's very involved currently with the expansion of the fire building down in District 1. But it really is a testament to the work that this 22-year-old kid took on way back when. And I do as well, thinking, what the heck? And really, it is a great, our Parks and Rec Department and the work that they have done is definitely a source of Dartmouth pride. So, although he says it's with a heavy heart, it's with a heavy heart that I think our board accepts this.
There are no words to express our gratitude to Tim and what he's done over the years. And he did most of it very quietly, with no fanfare, never looking for gratifying remarks. He just did it. And he's an overwhelming young man, or not such a young man anymore, and I'm sure he will be a leader at Fire District 1 for a long period of time and do his job properly. God bless him.
So, we will be inviting Tim into a meeting towards the end of June, which will be, then it will be more recognizing his service, which is hard to all of us.
Thank you for reading that, Ms. Ray.
Yes, it was, I thought it was well-written. And I certainly think, I'm thrilled, actually. We had a small conversation, you know, there was a lot of stuff on Facebook last year about getting better services up at, concession services up at Round Hill. And through a conversation with Tim, we just brainstormed, you know, what could we do? And he has made the bucket at a Ponte Gansett such a robust operation. And I'm completely confident that he will do the same with the bucket to go, that will be up at Round Hill for the season, and then will be able to, we've already talked, and actually, we talked to Tim as if he's going to be here doing it, bringing it out for the Christmas tree lighting, you know, different events.
And one other comment?
Yes, dear.
About Round Hill, it reminds me of many, many years ago in my younger days, I was the very first business to, at Round Hill, to sell food. I had a hot dog cart. And I was probably 40 years ago, 30 years ago, in my early days.
Any injuries?
No injuries and no one...
Sickness?
No, no one got sick that I know of. But it was a hot dog cart, and it was called Menudges Hot Dog Cart.
Well, I will say, Tim is concerned about moving the bucket on the go with grease from the French fry machine in there. So, if you have any advice, you let him know. Thank you, Stan.
Just one thing, Madam Chair. I think, you know, on behalf of the staff, Tim's always been there for us in this building. And as the board knows in multiple buildings, I say anything that moves, Tim's been responsible for. Anything that has wheels, he's been responsible for. So, you know, having said that, we don't want to waste any time. This is the busiest time of the year. So, we posted that position as part of the Steelworkers Union, just to get qualified candidates to apply so that we're not wasting any time. And Tim, as you mentioned, is still here. He's not going far. So, he's lent his support going forward in the transition.
And at our next meeting, I have on the agenda for executive board that we will be looking at the job description, because there are things that
overlap.
That he does that not necessarily in his job description. And we need to clear that up. All right, next on the list, we have DCTV. Pete, the proposal for a garage at 245 Russell's Mills Road. And we have pictures on the screen for this.
Peter Chase, Director of Media for DCTV. Just, so, we've been renting a garage in New Bedford for, since about 20 years now for our production truck, try to keep it indoors out of the weather. So, the last few years, I've started talking to Sean about doing some kind of garage, either in the parking lot in the area. We kind of put it on hold when there was a discussion of the rec center, you know, because we talked about maybe incorporating that into the rec center and doing that. So, now that seems like the rec center is, you know, on the back burner. We'd like to try to do something to get out of the financial obligation we have right now. So, like I said, currently, we store this production truck in New Bedford. The rental cost is just under $9,000 a year. It's not, you know, it's not AC'd or heated, no electricity. Yearly increase keeps on going up more and more. I think when we first started renting it about 20 years ago, it was around four grand a year. And then also, it seems like there's less hours that we can access it. We used to have 24/7 access out of it, but because of problems that they have on site, they've been really limiting the after-hours. And so, when we do a football game that goes till just after 10, sometimes we get locked out, sometimes we get in. Other times, we have to call the New Bedford Police to let us out, because we get in, we can't get out. So, it's kind of been a little bit of a hassle the past few years. So, we're looking to build a Shelter Logic-type building on 245 Russell's Mills Road, which is the property that we bought, the house lot that's right behind our parking lot. Park and Recreation built a similar garage at Allen Street. I'll have some pictures of it in a minute. And then also, right now, there's currently something similar to it down behind the old police station where the EPA is. The garage would be about 17 feet tall, 30 feet wide, but 30 feet deep, and it would actually fit both of our vehicles that we have. Right now, we don't house our blue van at all. Right now, we don't house our blue van at all, so it would basically be both vehicles in there. The other thing that we're looking to do is, we have a gas-powered generator in our production truck now. For some reason, it's always been an issue since we had this truck, so we're looking to transfer that over to an electric generator, electric battery-powered generator. So, to do that, we would need a place that this, you know, truck could charge. The facility that we're at now doesn't have any kind of electricity, like I said, so we can't plug in. So that's the only type of power that we'd put in it, just really just to trickle-charge this battery-powered generator that we'd look to transfer over from our gas-powered generator inside of our truck to the, to a battery-powered generator. We've had some preliminary discussions with Tim Lancaster, you know, who started a couple of months ago when we first started talking about this. Tim Barber, DPW, Dan from Planning, and then also, we started talking to the building inspector. So, we haven't, we don't have a final placement, but we want to talk about it a little bit more. So, this is kind of where we were talking about putting it, kind of tuck it behind the building, keeping all the trees. It has to be kind of this high up, because there's a kind of a big downhill over here. So, we just really wanted easy access right in off the back driveway and where you can drive right out along the, right through the parking lot. And this is actually the white production truck. The van isn't here, but that's the white production truck that would actually fit inside that building. And then I have one picture, oh, I didn't save it, but, so that's from their manual, but basically, it's a hard canvas. It, I think they say it lasts five to seven years, so it's not really a permanent structure. I mean, we, when we were talking to Chris Vitale about this, you know, about six, seven months ago, he was talking about maybe doing a more permanent structure somewhere for the whole town to use, and I think that's a great idea. But I think this would at least bridge a gap until we can get something somewhere else, because I know we're not the only department that has storage needs. You know, I know the Harbor Master has some, I know EMA has talked about having some. So, I mean, it would be great. Years ago, we talked about sharing the Allen Street location with the Pox Department, but it, they're just over, you know, they're busting at the seams there themselves, so there's really no room there. So, again, this is the very preliminary talks, you know, we just wanted to kind of get your feeling on it. We do have an article at Town Meeting to fund this, along with some other improvements that I think Buddy's going to talk about later on, so I had something on the agenda later, but I'm not going to steal Buddy's thunder. He can talk if there's any questions about the building. I'll be here to discuss it, but I'm sure Buddy will discuss the building itself in the future, but.
Within our packet, the location picture is on page 13, and the Shelter Logic or Shelter Tech specs are on page 14. My question to you, Peter, is, are you anticipating paving and around?
I think we were doing, we were talking about just doing some like crushed stone, coming here, crushed stone going there, and maybe some pavers on the ground, nothing permanent, again. And the only reason I would do pavers over there is because we do have some stuff that we store in the garage other than the vehicle. So, very limited stuff, nothing that, again, that needs any kind, you know, it's all cold weather storage, so just to, you know, shore it up a little bit better on the ground there. You know, DPW did talk about maybe using their hot box to actually pour a pad, but I don't think that's really necessary. Like I said, I think we can just buy enough pavers to pave that, you know, just put it down. And the other thing is, we wanted to keep it tight to the site, because we don't know what the plan is for this whole area, and we didn't want to take up, you know, the middle. And then also, we were trying to, you know, like I said, keep it as hidden as possible, so this way, it's not an eyesore to anyone in the area. And I think, I think there are a couple of neighbors here, which probably, that's some of their questions, and so, like I said, we haven't, we haven't really gone too far, because this is just a very rough pavement, like placement right now. It would depend on setbacks and everything, because they are two separate lots. So, we'd have to discuss what the best way of building this is, if we have to worry about the 10 or 15-foot setback that we need, or if, you know, you go to zoning board to build it closer to the setback, and so that was a discussion that we'd have with the building people.
Do I have anyone on the board that has a question or comment?
Will that affect down the road, access to the back? That's really not in the way.
Well, no, that's why I said, I mean, I think the driveway is up here that comes to the house. The house is up over here, the garage is right over here. So I don't think it would, but again, they're really only made for five to seven years. Now, again, if we were looking to build a structure in the back for a recreation center, I'd love to add on to it to have this garage just built into a regular, you know, the regular structure.
Quite a distance away.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, right now, it's in New Bedford, so it's 15, 20 minutes away, so any place is closer. So, again, like we, that's, and that's why we were looking at like a temporary structure like this. We didn't want to look into a regular building that you would normally build.
You concerned about security?
No, we have cameras around the building, so we have it, and then, you know, most of the trucks stay locked. I mean, right now, just because of some of the issues we've had at our site, production truck stays parked in that parking lot more than not, you know, and that's the other thing, is when we first started, you know, that production truck rolled out maybe once a week, twice a week. Now, in the next six or seven weeks, it's out almost every night, you know, during the week, Monday through Friday. So, it just seems more and more of a chore to actually drive the 15 minutes to go pick it up and drop it off at the end of the night, and so I think, if anything, it might be more secure here than.
My only suggestion is that a darker color will be less obvious than putting up a white one or a tan one.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I think there was, I think there's a green, like a forest green or something, like a hunter green.
A regular green and a gray. So, anything in those dark is going to be
Yeah, I wouldn't want, like I said, I ran by the Allen Street to take a picture of that, and I forgot to put it in, so that was my fault.
That's okay. Without any further questions, I'm actually going to move the order and going to have Buddy join you to talk about the CPC request for funds to repair the building at 247 Russell's Mills Road. And I know you also have pictures of that, too, so Buddy might want you to pull that up. So we can talk about this whole DCTV plan. Is that good? And then we'll keep you up there, Buddy.
Some work? Great. Buddy Bakersmith, Chair of the CPC. So, yeah, so we have one, two, three, four warrant articles and two project articles. So the first would be the DCTV building, in which the request that was supported by the CPC is for $25,000 towards the development of construction kind of bid documents to do a number of kind of renovations, primarily exterior, but not completely exterior to the building. And it's great that Peter's here, can answer questions and talk about that and kind of what, why those are important repairs and renovations that need to be made at this time, and that was fully supported by the CPC. Well, let me stop there for the project-specific.
So, yeah, like Buddy said, so basically, we're just looking to update, we had a 2016 existing condition study done. We've kind of checked some stuff off that list. As you can see, we, when we moved in in 2009, we replaced walls, ceilings inside, we did the doors, windows, roof, repointed the chimney, did the electrical and HVAC updates. We did the study in 2016, which found some asbestos, which we had remediated in 2017, and then we replaced gutters along the side of the building in 2019. So this new study would basically look at the old study and then see if any of the conditions get worse and make suggestions on what needs to be fixed. I think, you know, its majority, you know, 99% of it's going to be outside work, whether it's the siding and the foundation. So, they're supposed to, with the study, they're supposed to give 100% bid documents along with design plans, and then also provide estimates for the construction, the administration, and the contingency. And then we hope to, the timeline is to hopefully wrap this up end of this year, you know, kind of, it's a little bit of a gung-ho timeline. I think we were told about six months to do the study, and then return to CPC and Town Meeting next year for funding the repairs. Here's what the building looks like currently. As you can see, there is a lot of, you know, shingles missing down along the bottom. The other problem is, is in the last report, we were told that there's a bunch of sill work that needs to be done. I think they estimated like 30% to 40% of the sill was rotted at that time, so I'm sure it's going to be more now. One concern they did have, and this is why we talked about the foundation a little bit, is where the siding meets the ground, there's really no clearance there at all. So, you know, having to do something around the building to make that a bigger gap. But this is towards the back of the building, and then here, you can see all the missing shingles in here, over there, that, you know, and that's how it is. A lot of that building is missing shingles, and even some of the shingles that are there are very paper-thin. So, again, that's the majority of the work that we're looking to have done.
Pete, is that basement finished? Are any sections of it finished? Is it full?
There's a, there's a small crawl area underneath the kitchen area, which is up front to the right. There's a unfinished basement. I think it used to be the restroom, from what I was told years ago.
Yes, the men's and the women's restroom.
Right, and so there's a small area down there, but we don't really do much in it. It's all just, you know, foundation down there, and then there's a big crawl space on the majority, you know, probably 60% of the building, so.
Is your overall plan to try and get an offshoot of a garage off of that building? The drive-in, drive-out?
Not this building.
I don't think this building, yeah. I don't think it would fit the site. I mean, unless somehow we did something on that, like right now, where the old police station, where the police station had like a driveway that kind of comes up behind our building. So I guess if we ever, in the long term, maybe get something there, but I don't think that's in this round of plans. Like, right now, it's really just to replace the shingles to whatever is going to be acceptable. I was at the Historical Commission meeting tonight to talk to them and told them that when we start looking at the different options for how to replace the shingles, they, you know, we'd ask them to weigh in, because, you know, I know we have to follow Department of Interior standards, so, and the people we're looking at to do the study know that and know to follow that, so I just don't know what the options are, you know, if it, you know. We just want to, I mean, it is a nice-looking building, it's an old-looking building, and we want to keep it looking the same way.
They did a great job on the inside.
So, yeah, we want to, we want to just preserve the outside right now.
So to clarify, this is Article Three from CPC, DCTV renovations Phase Two, and we're expecting another phase.
To actually do the work.
In the spring?
Yes, Dave.
When you start looking at an old building, you start saying, "Shingles down," you never know what you're going to find as well. One of the beauties of the Massachusetts program to replace school roofs is they've say, they don't replace roofs on buildings, they're not worth it, because the building's not going to, it's not worth saving the building or whatever. Are we in any danger at this point to find stuff that we're not going to be happy with?
I'm hoping that's what the study is going to look at. I mean, I have the same concerns. I will, you know, it's like, I don't know what, you know, there's, like I said, there's a bunch of shingles missing, so I don't know what it's going to look like behind that. I know when we redid the roof in 2009, we were just planning on doing the shingles on the roof. They ripped the shingles off, and they said, "No, you need all the plywood underneath, too." So basically doubled the price right then and there. So, that's something that I want to make sure is built into this as far as contingencies and really err on the side of caution and think that we're going to have to replace a lot of the underneath, you know.
Anyone else? No? Thank you, Pete. I know that we have a Butters, and I'm just wondering if you have any questions, if you'd like to come, you'd need to come up to the, and just let us know who you are.
Kim Brandt, 237 Russell's Mills Road, I directly abut 245. The garage. Yeah, well, I saw on the agenda, a garage, that's a tent. I was thinking we were going to build a structure. I have no objection to that. It's really not New England enough, though.
How about we do it in green? It'll be green for Dartmouth.
Yeah, green, blue, you know, nautical colors. Yeah, I have, I have no objection to that. Couple of questions. 245 was a residence. It's now owned by the town. I'm assuming that's Class Residential A. Would they have to be reclassed, even though the town owns it?
To?
Whatever.
Because we're using it as DCT?
However, town property is classed.
The Maderas property.
Right.
Do we need to reclass that?
That's residential A, I think, right now. I don't know if there would need to be a reclassification. I would have no objection to that, so.
To place the garage, to place the structure on the existing parcel right now?
No, no problem with that at all. Or, it's just a technical question, do you need to reclass that now that the town owns it, from Residential A to whatever?
We're not doing anything else.
Nothing's been done to the property or any, in the
Yeah, this would equate to a shed being on a residential property.
I think what he's referring to is the property that the town owns, separate from this, is the town, this is a separate question, I'm assuming, is the town going to have to reclass that property because it's owned by the town now?
Right.
I would say the answer is no to that. There's nothing right now being proposed for that site.
Right, exactly. Okay, all right, good. DCTV is a great neighbor. I love having them there. They're quiet, there's no litter, there's no wild parties. That white van is parked right outside my bedroom window, so I see it all the time. It's right, actually, almost on, near the street, so I see it all the time, and I would like to see it protected and covered. I actually thought there was going to be more of a proposal for a more permanent structure, where you would have safety and security, maybe, you know, an alarm to building type of situation. I'm assuming there's valuable equipment in that white van and also the blue van. So, I mean, you know, based on this, this isn't going to affect me at all, so.
In all honesty, I think that we'd love to do something more permanent, but we have so many unknowns. The fact of looking at something that within five to seven years, we may have a better plan.
Right.
Let's hope, within the next three, we have a plan.
Right, and I'm glad to see the repairs can be made to the building. One of my fears is DCTV will leave, and the town might want to do something different with that property, like sell it and have a commercial entity next time. I wouldn't be happy with that.
Right now, DCTV has no other option, because we're out of other spaces, but also, they have done such an amazing conversion
Yes.
In the building.
Yes.
And it suits their needs and has enough space without having too much space.
Right.
So right now, it's good and it's nice to see a historic building in our, in our town being used.
Yes, again, I love having them as neighbors. I know they just won some awards.
We'll be talking that at a future meeting, yes.
A professional agency, and they do a great service. I mean, we're on TV right now, right?
Yeah, live.
I mean, this is town government, we're live. This is cable TV, what we're doing right now. So, I was just a little underwhelmed to see the, a tent versus a structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Buddy. Back to the mic.
All right.
Yeah, and as Peter had mentioned, it's a historic preservation project, so the Department of Interior Standards will, the consultant will take those into consideration, and our Historical Commission will review kind of what that work is, and if there's any questions, kind of provide consultation, so. And then, as Peter said, you know, the outcome will be bid documents, and then we fully anticipate in the future, there'll be funding needed to actually do the work. So, this won't do any work, but it'll set the stage for the work to be, to be done.
Thank you for the clarification.
Our other project is $50,000, which is also a historic preservation project for the Joseph Davis Cemetery. And that's a cemetery that is off of Font's Corner Road, next to Lazy Boy. Kind of tucked in there, and it's easy to drive by it. Road, next to Lazy Boy. Kind of tucked in there, and it's easy to drive by it. The, this is being done under Parks and Rec, kind of oversight, which gives me the opportunity to give a shout out to Tim. I'm saddened to hear that he's moving on in respect to, the CPC has done a number of projects sponsored by Parks and Recreation, and I have to say they are incredibly competently managed. And what they say they can get done, they get done. And so, we, we will miss him from the CPC point of view. But this is a project that is working with Judy Lund in a consulting fashion, since Judy really has the expertise around the town's cemeteries. There are about 200 headstones in this cemetery, and about 69 of them, in their survey, need repair. They may have been knocked off their base, cracked. There are several stones that are kind of just set in a corner of the wall, kind of leaning against a stone wall. So, this, what this project will do is, one, have clean all the stones. There's a process that's been used in Westport that has successfully cleaned old stones in a way that has not damaged them. The 69 stones will be repaired, put back on their bases, the proper locations. And then there's a section of stone wall that needs to be repaired. Basically stabilize, some tree removal. There are some trees that are pushing the wall over, and that'll be stabilized. I don't know if there's any other questions about that project, but that's what that proposal is.
I haven't seen too many funerals at the cemetery lately.
What's that?
Haven't been many funerals at the cemetery lately.
Awesome buggy.
So, that was Article Four. That's Article Four on the agenda, and we've heard of Article Three.
Yep. And then we have two other housekeeping articles.
Article One.
Yeah, I don't know which order they're in. So, which one is Article One in your?
Administrative budget.
Okay, administrative budget. So, the Community Preservation Act allows the CPC to set aside up to 5% of anticipated revenues for administration. For us, administrative expenses are kind of secretarial support. We pay our own legal fees. We pay the town council for legal services specifically requested by the CPC. What might be review, review or warrant article, might be questions about a proposal that's before us, and things like that. We can also use the administrative funds for consultant fees. We have pretty much, historically have pegged our administrative budget at $35,000, which actually, in terms of our projected revenue for fiscal '26, it represents about three, three and a half percent. There really isn't a need to, for additional administrative funds. We could buy fine with $35,000, and generally, we don't spend that much. So, anything that we don't spend in our administrative funds rolls into the project accounts. So, we don't build it up as an account. It goes into an account that can be used for future projects. So, that's, that's our proposal, is, is another $35,000 kind of administrative budget. And then the final article is our reserves, and the CPA requires that we set aside 10% of the projected revenue for each of the three purposes: the CPA, housing, historic preservation, and open space and recreation. Now, that commitment of the 10% can be either set aside in reserves for future projects, or commitments to actual projects. So, our projection is that we will need to meet that 10%. We always give ourselves a little bit of cushion. $110,000 commitment or reserve for each of these three purposes. Since we have some historic preservation commitments, we don't have to set aside as much anticipating that town approval of the $75,000 in projects that are before the town in June. Another $35,000 set aside would get us to that 110 figure. So, that's what that article's all about, if there's any questions.
Would the, so, the DCTV project comes under historic preservation.
Yes.
And would be on top of the $35,000.
Correct, correct.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
All right.
Great job explaining.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Buddy.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, folks. We are going to go through, let me see where we are. We are on J, Town Meeting Warrant Article Vote. And we have two members of the Finance Committee with us tonight to talk about Town Meeting Warrant Recommendations. In our packet, we did not get their.
I sent them individually.
Individually, okay.
Their recommendations on all the warrants.
Okay.
Warrant articles.
All right. So, I will read them down, right?
You can read them down.
I'm trying to think how we've done it in the past.
Yes, yes.
We read them down, and then we take a vote.
Take a vote.
All right. Article One, Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amount of $35,000 for administrative expenses, as referenced in the Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2026 budget.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Second by Sean McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, 5-0. Article Number Two, Community Preservation Committee FY 2026 Community Housing and Historic Preservation Reserve, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve for later appropriation monies from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amount of $255,000, as referenced in the Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2026 budget, to be allocated as forward, as follows: $110,000 for community housing reserve, $110,000 for open space reserve, and $35,000 for historic preservation reserve.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes 5-0. Article Three, Community Preservation Committee DCTV renovations, Phase Two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $25,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Repair Reserve, Preservation Reserve, to the Town of Dartmouth for the development of a bid document for repairs and restoration work at 247 Russell Mills Road, all in accordance with the terms and conditions of the Community Preservation Project Memorandum of Understanding and Reference in the Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2026 budget.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing 5-0. Article Four, Community Preservation Committee Gravestone and Wall Restoration at the Joseph Davis Cemetery, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve to the Dartmouth, Town of Dartmouth Board of Parks and Recreation, for the gravestone and wall restoration at the Joseph Davis Cemetery, all in accordance with the terms and conditions of the Community Preservation Project Memorandum of Agreement and Reference in the Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2026 budget.
Motion to recommend.
Mr. Mickelson makes the motion to recommend, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Five, Appropriation from the Cemetery Sale of Lot Fund, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $2,000 from the cemetery sale of lot fund to be spent on this, on cemetery purposes, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 114, Sections 15 and 25.
Motion to recommend.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes by 5-0. Article Number Six, Establish FY 2026 Maximum Spending Budget for Revolving Account, Revolving Funds, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, and Statutes 37-6 of the General Bylaws, to determine the maximum spending limits of FY 26 for the following revolving funds, the purposes of which are detailed in Statute 37-6 of the General Bylaws. Revolving Account, Cemetery Revolving Account, maximum spending amount, $4,500. Recreation and Park Revolving Fund, $250,000. Library Revolving Fund for Loss or Damage Items, $10,000.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Article Seven, Rescind Borrowing Authorization, to see if the town will vote to rescind the authority to borrow previously authorized, unissued debt compromise of amounts voted by the town under the following warrant articles from prior years. Town Meeting dated June 6, 2006, Article 26, was for GIS, GDS Information System. The amount to rescind is $236,601. June 5, 2012, Article 15, CWMP Engineering Design Phase and WPC Facility Upgrade, amount to rescind, $802,522. Town Meeting, June 6, 2016, Article Number Five, Ultraviolet Disinfection for the Sewer, amount to rescind is $709,923. October 17, 2017, Article Number Four, Dartmouth Regional Parks and Trails Project Phase Five Funding, amount to rescind, is $691,670. October 17, 2017, Article Number Six, Construction of New Public Library at 211 Cross Road, amount to rescind, $3,842,051. And Town Meeting Date, June 5, 2018, Article Five, STM, which is Special Town Meeting, Construction of Aeration System, Two Water Storage Tanks, the amount to rescind is $37,105.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell.
Question?
Question, Mr. Tadavon.
Could you just clarify exactly what this means?
So, what authorized unissued means is that the project, any one of these projects, had the authorization to borrow up to a certain amount of money. You haven't seen one of these, the board hasn't seen one of these articles in quite some time, probably over a decade. This cleans up that and allows the, as we spoke, when I did the presentation, the debt capacity of the town to grow a little bit bigger, because now the authorized, that authorized unissued number changes in the favor of the town. So, there's a project that we can't assign, you can't, this is not cash. This is the authorization to borrow for these particular projects.
Would be nice if it was cash.
Yeah, we could use it.
So, it is just?
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0, it passes us. On to the next. Article Eight, Acceptance of Capital Planning Committee Report and Funding of FY 2026 Capital Plan, to see if the town will vote to accept the Capital Planning Committee Report of Capital Needs for FY 2026 Spring Annual Town Meeting and fund from the following: $108,867 from surplus revenue.
No, $180,000.
Sorry, $180,867 from surplus revenue, $100,000 from the sewer retained earnings, and $400,000 from solid waste retained earnings.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Made, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Article Nine, Salaries and Stipends of Elected Officials, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary of the following elected official, officer of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, and any and all acts and amendments thereof. Town Clerk, One, at fiscal year 2025, $102,685, and fiscal 2026, $106,685.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Question?
Yes.
We, we had three abstentions on the Finance Committee?
Absolutely. Article Number Nine.
They recommended it.
Any reason, particular reason for the abstention?
Somebody abstained?
Bob Glavine, Chairman of the Finance Committee. We all had different reasons for our abstentions, but one of the main things was the, they felt that, that, you know, the 4%, when, you know, the unions were getting 3%, that, and, and there has been an escalation of the salary at that position over the last five years, so. But we voted, they voted for it.
Voted an abstention versus a negative?
Right.
That's why, never, doesn't make sense. Okay.
They, they didn't want to get into it, I guess.
Guess not.
Guess not, okay.
You got into something else.
Just so you know, that the remaining boards on here have the number of folks, and there are no stipends for anyone else on this.
Really? I thought I was going to change this here.
Nope, we're still working for nothing. So, Mr. Mickelson.
Motion to recommend. I did that.
And the second was made by Mr. McDonnell. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, 5-0. Point taken by FinCom that the percentage raise is more than other positions. Article Ten, Schedule A, FY 2026 Budget Appropriation, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $108,500,032 from various funding sources for the purpose of funding expenses, salary, and compensation of all elected and appointed officers of the town, for payment of debt and interest, charges and outlays of various town departments for insuring a 2026 fiscal year. And at the time, we will have the operating budget in our packet. This is moving the entire budget to the town floor.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. Any question?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. McDonnell.
I noticed in the recommendations from the Finance Committee that they reduced the town administrator's budget line item by 24 some odd thousand dollars. Evidently, the Finance Committee has decided to interject itself into contract negotiations, and by doing, by doing this, they have placed the town in jeopardy of litigation, because assigned, we have a signed contract. The Finance Committee has overstepped their bounds by aiming at this particular line item. The Finance Committee is supposed to do upon a, a choice, this was the only line item in this entire budget that the Finance Committee has decided to reduce, for whatever reason, we don't know. But by doing so, the Finance Committee has placed this town in bad and possible litigation for the future. And you've overstepped your bounds, and you need to make this correction at Town Meeting, because if you don't, I am going to make a recommendation to, to put this 24,000 back from your budget of the reserve. Plain and simple. Plain and simple. Bob, I don't know what the reasoning behind this is. I don't know if it's because somebody has something against the town administrator, or whatever it is, you guys did wrong. You put yourself into a position in this town to put the town in a bad position legitimate-wise.
Yes, I'd like to know exactly why FinCom did this.
First of all, on, on the Select Board meeting on the Monday, you voted to interview, you voted to make an offer, contract offer, and you offered, and within, and then you signed the contract. Within two hours, we were shocked, that after a year, all of a sudden, somebody pops up out of nowhere, and all of a sudden, within two hours, you, you sign a contract.
It wasn't out of nowhere, Bob. This was the same process.
Please let me finish.
This is the same process that we used for, this is the same process that we used for the HR director. Go back and take a look, it's the same exact process.
Please let me finish.
Go ahead.
Okay. So then on Thursday, when we were looking at the budget, we saw the number 226, 225, as, as the new, new number. We, we looked at the amount of, that was paid to the prior town administrator who had a lot of experience, and we were shocked at the number. We were absolutely shocked at the number. And also, we have a right, as a Finance Committee, to vote on every single line item in that budget, and we did, okay? And then, after our meeting, we did a little bit of research. So you make an offer to somebody who doesn't have a lot of experience, 225,000. The mayor of New Bedford, 167,000. The mayor of Boston, 207,000.
Two sets of, two totally different sets of circumstances.
The mayor of Brockton, 188. CEO of, CEO of a town. The city of Fall River, 118,000. And in his previous position, we looked at his contract, and it was $166,000, okay? So, we have, I personally, and actually, I'll be letting Melissa know, that I am going to resign as chairman of the FinCom, and also the FinCom, in protest of this, because I have, I'm protesting, and I have lost confidence in the Select Board to effectively negotiate contracts for the, for the town of Dartmouth.
Well, evidently, you didn't look at his contract enough, because he was in the vicinity of 190 some odd thousand dollars. You take a look at his contract.
Well, I said 166.
That's, was the base pay. Add in the 50% that he gets on the health care that was, is part of the contract, and he's around 190.
Regardless.
The current, it doesn't make a difference, Bob, you're wrong on this issue, and I can tell you, right now, the only thing I can say is, thank you for your service, goodbye.
Well, I will let Melissa know, I work for Melissa, not for you.
Well, you know something, I'm a town meeting member, you do work for me!
No, the moderator appoints me.
Part of the, okay, Bob, you know.
I think we have.
Thank you for your service, goodbye.
I think we have, I would like to say we agree to disagree, but we cannot negotiate in good faith, and then think that the Finance Committee is going to renegotiate a contract.
We're not.
So.
You did.
But.
We're not, I mean, you can ask, you can ask for a line item transfer, you, you can figure out ways to do it, so, we are not jeopardizing.
Well, it's easy enough, I'll, I'll make the amendment to, to put that money back
We're gonna have to.
From your budget.
You have a right to do that.
That's right.
We'll have to. Terry has a point.
I'm very disappointed at the tone of voice that you're using in talking to people who have been sitting here listening to your meeting all night, Mr. McDonald.
I'm sorry, I'm upset, Terry.
I'm not done.
I'm upset.
I'm not done. You think you are, how easy would it have been for a conversation to happen with the chairperson and the Finance Committee before this process went like that? It would have been very easy.
We're not bound to do that.
But it wasn't done, and that's fine, and that's your prerogative, and we're clear about that. The only thing that we could do is look at our role, which is to look at that budget and make that decision, and so we did, and you will do what you're gonna do. We weren't negotiating any contract, we were not. We were simply looking at the expense that had been budgeted, which was 200,000, and the amount that was bumped up another 25, and we were quite stunned. And I think that you also know that the Finance Committee, if they were asked, would have been recommending Gary Carrero for this position, given, I'm sorry if this makes you uncomfortable, Gary, given the years of experience that he has, given the relationships that he has with people in town, and the work that he's been able to accomplish in the past year, but we weren't asked, and I get that, and it's not our role, clearly.
You were, the Finance Committee was not asked.
There is absolutely no excuse for you speaking to people the way that you do.
I'm sorry.
I don't care how mad you are, you're a grownup.
I'm sorry, I'm upset. Terry, let me ask you this one question, Terry, let me ask you this one question. When was the last time any chairman of this committee sat down with the chairman of the Finance Committee to let that person know, this is the person we're going to hire? When, did we do it with the HR? No. Did we do it with the, with the assistant town administrator? No. Did we do it with the previous town administrator? No.
Yep.
Okay, these are the, these are the positions that this board does, okay? I can understand, you guys have your, your feelings hurt about this, okay? Plain and simple.
I'm not listening to this.
Plain and simple.
Thank you.
Okay.
She's not leaving.
Well, unfortunately, for all of this, for all of us, this is something I'd like to avoid in the future, and duly noted that a conversation between other committees may be something that is warranted. Any other discussion points on Article 10? From any other member?
I, I just got to say, Sean, you have a right to your opinion, I think you have a right to say what you feel, you represent yourself, but I, I personally, I think you could have expressed yourself in a way that's not so.
David, I really don't care what you think, okay? Plain and simple.
Sean, don't be a bully.
I am going to be the way I am. If you don't like it, you can walk out the door, but this is the way I am.
You're a bully.
And I've been this way for the last 15 years, and I'll be this way for the next three.
You're a bully.
I'm not a bully.
Yes, you are. You have no reason to talk to them that way.
All right, boys.
You can voice your opinions.
Boys.
All right, I'm down.
All right, Sean, Dave, did you have anything else to say?
Nothing, I'm done.
I'm down.
I'm sorry.
Me too.
That we have disintegrated this.
Yeah, me too.
Article 10, how does the board want to vote?
Motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend was made by Stanley and seconded by Sean. How are we going to vote on this?
It's the, it's the $108,500,32.
Yep.
That was the motion.
That's the motion. So are we?
That's what we're voting on, that 108.
That's what we're voting on right now. Are we going to say that we are in favor of it, or are we going to?
The motion is, is a presented budget at $108,500,32.
All in favor?
That's the budget.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Article 11, funding sewer and septic system betterment, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,137,226.76. I think we have a typo there.
Yeah, there is.
We have an extra run-on of zeros, from sewer betterment revenue to cover the FY 2026 debt service and associated fees on sewer betterment projects as administered by the sewer enterprise fund of the Department of Public Works, and to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $40,030 from septic system betterment revenue to cover the FY 2026 debt service and associated fees on Title V septic system betterment loans as administered by the, administered by the Board of Health, and to concurrently authorize the town accountant to make the necessary adjustments to each applicable special assessment fund for the various projects and loans.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Article 11, recommended by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mickelson. I did it again. Seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Article 12, funding solid waste enterprise fund, to see if the town will vote to approve $2,162,165 pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, with an appropriation of $1,783,182 for the purpose of funding direct operating expenses of the solid waste department for FY 2026, and in order to fund indirect operating expenses, an additional $378,983 has already been appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the solid waste enterprise fund, with all expenses funded from solid waste enterprise revenues, as shown in detail below.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mittel, Mickelson, seconded by?
I'll let somebody else take it.
Okay.
I.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Article 13, funding Water Department Enterprise Fund, to see if the town will vote to approve $6,913,654 pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, with the appropriation of $5,650,773 for the purpose of funding direct operating expenses of the Water Department for FY 2026, and in order to fund indirect operating expenses, an additional $1,262,881 has already been appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund, with all expenses funded from Water Enterprise revenues, as shown in detail below.
Motion to recommend.
Motion by, by Mr. Mittel, Mickelson, seconded by?
And on the article. Just a few questions.
Yes.
To put out there when it comes to the water infrastructure. Do we have the wells up and running yet, finally? If not, why? And are we investigating other means of water supply other than the city of New Bedford? If so, what's the update?
Do you have information on that, Gary?
So, the wells, as you know, the, the infrastructure on Old Westport Road is being renovated right now, and those will put up two more wells back into operation. Currently, we're still purchasing water from the city of New Bedford. Hopefully, that bringing those two wells on will mitigate that. There's also been discussion briefly about potentially the water line coming in from Fall River through Westport, tapping into that, so now that there's some level of, I don't want to say this, we're competing with New Bedford, because right now, we're just with the New Bedford rates, we, we have, we're at the mercy of New Bedford. So that will take a longer discussion to do that with, with the city of Fall River, they're looking for customers desperately, but right now, that's all we have in play. We, it's really not even a, we haven't really approached the city.
The line from Fall River just goes straight down Route 6?
It goes straight to Olympia Pizza in Westport.
Right.
They extended it.
Right.
So, they're thinking of extending it to the Dartmouth.
But that's where it ends.
Right, but they're thinking of extending it even further to the, to the Dartmouth line.
Do we have a contract with New Bedford?
No.
We have a, I believe it was way, way back when, like an intermissible agreement.
Can be broken.
At will, basically. Why, why don't we, pronto, get involved with Fall River?
Well, maybe just.
We have to continue the line.
Recommendation, when Tim's here next time, if we can ask him a question.
Yeah, it's, it's, right now, it's still in the works of bringing, they're talking about, and I watched him on the Fall River, and he's bringing the line even further down Route 6.
Okay, thank you.
Did they?
With the wells, the problem is.
Fall River abandon the water line from Nokachoke to Fall River?
The, at the gates there?
Yeah.
For as far as I know, the gate, those gates have not been open for, for quite some time.
But in order for, in order for them to use that water, which they did for the Kerr Mill, they had to have had a line in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I, it's a good point, maybe that, maybe that's one of the things we can ask Tim when he, when he comes in, if that's.
And the wells, the wells were still, were still out there.
Yeah, it's still down on the wells with the.
We got to get this, we got to get these fixed. All right, Seth, you've got your second.
I've put a note here to ask Tim to one of our future meetings, so we'll have that information.
Thank you.
So we have two meetings before town meeting, so we'll get an answer before town meeting for that. Okay, we have, this article has been made motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Article 14, funding Sewer Department Enterprise Fund, to see if the town will vote to approve $6,121,178 pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, with an appropriation of $4,918,809 for the purpose of funding direct operating expenses of the Sewer Department for FY 2026, and in order to fund indirect operating expenses, an additional $1,202,369 has already been appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, with all expenses funded from the Sewer Enterprise revenues, as shown in detail below.
Motion to recommend.
Made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil.
On the article.
Yes, question?
Some of the notes that I have are, we've already gotten into this, but I wanted to read this. We've allocated and are spending the money from Opera to update the current systems and the equipment in our wastewater systems. How far are we when planning for the upgrades and the additions to handle real future growth? Study after study is banted around and invested in, what are the results? Apparently, we do have them, so, that was news to me today. Have any been completed with regard to the estimates on future needs? All I know is that the more people bring up the capacity issues in the system, the more applications for the projects come into the planning and zoning boards. At some point, we need to stop talking and start doing. The town needs to be ahead of the curve, not behind it, when it comes to, where the costs are higher and the pressure on the current equipment is also higher. Thank you.
Okay, again, that would be, we'll have Tim in before town meeting, so we have some answers that we can, or, and, guide him to expound on. So, we have Article 14, moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 15, funding Dartmouth Cable Television, DCTV Enterprise Fund, to see if the town will vote to approve $627,945 pursuant to special legislation, legislation approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in 2014, and the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, with an appropriation of $507,380 for the purpose of funding direct operating expenses of the Dartmouth Cable Television, DCTV, for FY 2026, and in order to fund indirect operating expenses, an additional $120,565 has already been appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the Dartmouth Cable Television Enterprise Fund, with all expenses funded from cable access franchise fees and other Dartmouth Cable Television revenues, all as shown in detail below.
Motion to recommend.
Recommended by Mr. Middleton, Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 16, funding Waterways Management Enterprise Fund, to see if the town will vote to approve $410,142 pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, with an appropriation of $353,766 for the purpose of funding direct operating expenses of the Waterways Management Department for FY 2026, and in order to fund indirect operating expenses, an additional $56,376 has already been appropriated, appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the Waterways. in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the Waterways Management Enterprise Fund, with expenses funded with three hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars from Waterways Receipts, a transfer of two thousand dollars from the general fund to the Waterways Management Enterprise Fund as a subsidiary for parking fines issued by the Waterway staff at Waterways Landings, for which the general fund is the chief beneficiary, and a transfer of twenty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund for the purpose of funding twenty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars of the salary of the harbor master included in the appropriation for personnel services below, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section five G, as shown in detail below.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any questions on this article? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article seventeen, Appropriation.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Just read the article number, the term, and then the amount.
Okay.
Thank you.
Article seventeen, Appropriation for Use of Stabilization Funds for Opioid Legal Settlement Receipts, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred thirty-five thousand from opioid legal settlement stabilization fund for the fiscal year of 2026 to use in accordance with the strategies set forth.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Mr. Mickelson with the recommendation, Mr. O'Neil with the second. Any questions? Just an FYI, I will be speaking at town meeting on this, so that folks know what we're spending the money on. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Five zero. Article eighteen, Appropriation for the Use of Dartmouth Cable Television, DCTV, Stabilization Fund for Capital Expenditures.
A motion to recommend.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any questions on this one? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Article nineteen, Appropriation for Use of Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund for School Fire Safety Capital Expenditures, and this is in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
To recommend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any questions on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
This is five zero. Article twenty, Loans for Septic System Repair, Replacement, and/or Upgrade, and this is an appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars for the project, with a borrowing of four hundred thousand on bonds and notes.
Issue of bonds. Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any questions on this one? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passing five zero. Article twenty-one, Establishment of the Camping Bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding a new Article eight to Chapter three fifteen as follows.
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second, and on the article.
Yes, Mr. O'Neil.
Hopefully, we can revisit this at some point to, to review the use of, or the occupation of the campers on residential sites. That's becoming a big issue.
Mm-hmm.
Every year, more and more.
That's more of a building, that's more of a building, that's more of a building code thing. I mean, the only thing, I mean, the only thing.
That was something that came up during the pit count, and it is something that through that group, we're working with the building department for violations and enforcement.
Can't get any, can't get any satisfaction on it, though. Their hands are just basically tied.
One of the things.
I don't know what, how we'll fix it, but.
Yeah.
I've got two off the top that I can think of right now that.
We've got, we'll certainly forward those addresses. There is limited that they can do. We needed to have something in the general bylaws about camping, and we did not want to do something that said no trespassing, because we do want to encourage people to walk our lands, but the camping issue, especially on, this deals with our public lands, Dartmouth-owned properties, were becoming hazardous waste sites, and as I stated earlier tonight, as of two weeks ago, we have our final unhoused person moved into shelter situation, and now, to the cost of the town, will be to go out and clean up that, those sites, and it's more than one site, which is incorporates, you know, hazardous waste materials, human waste materials, medical waste materials, and that is more than what DPW can do for us, so it's a job that has been bid out to a professional company, and that's why we are putting out for this establishment of a camping bylaw. Yes, Mr.?
The genesis of this came from where? This article period?
This came from a work with the Dartmouth Community Social Outreach Team, after the work that we've done with homeless individuals.
I understand that, but it also, is it going to affect campers in homes as well?
No, no. This is solely for town property.
So Finance Committee voted zero to eight against?
The, I'll have the Finance Committee speak on it. I watched the meeting, but I'll have them speak on it.
I think that Gary represented exactly what Heidi, you just explained to us, but when we started to talk through what would be the impact of this bylaw, we didn't see that it would really be any more effective than what they're already doing, which is no trespass orders. And the idea of fining somebody who has no money as an incentive to move them didn't make any sense to us. Okay?
Does this article need some more work on it? Is that the issue here?
I mean, we can take amendments from the floor, if people had, I think it will have a great deal of discussion, but I have also asked for the chief to speak on this. This really came out of Board of Health and the Chief of Police, who, and you can read, read that, the enforcement officials. The sites that we were most concerned about were sites that through the leaching of water into the well area or into.
The aquifer.
The aquifer, that has been compromised through, as I said, medical, human waste.
I understand the purpose of what you tried to pull off, and in the end, with the language you came back from the state, are you satisfied the way it's written as it is?
Yes.
I think also the.
We will be posting, what we don't have currently is we don't have no camping signage, which we do need to put at, we cannot. We have identified the properties, and what happens is, we wanted something to protect the town properties. What then happens is these individuals, when told they had to move, some would move onto private property. That becomes just, you know, the changing of deck chairs on the Titanic, because ultimately, what we want is to find more appropriate shelter.
Did the language change much when we sent it to the state and it came back? That often happens, in this case?
Well, this has never made it to the state. That doesn't happen till after town meeting. It goes after. Yeah, so it goes after, it goes after for their blessing.
This was done by, this was done by our council. Anthony wrote this.
They wouldn't recommend, they would, they would say, okay, it passes the smell test, it doesn't, but I think the genesis, to go back to why we think that this, the committee, because I'm also on that committee, is that we're trying to mitigate the liability and risk for the town, having these individuals, not, and, and as you see, the COA and Matt Deserol, they're, they're doing all they can to get these people off and into shelters. So this, we feel, goes a little bit forward, and not that there's fees in there that we have to charge, but it mitigates the risk to the town and the liability on town property.
I really appreciate your work, but, and as long as you're satisfied that the ending language was what you covered your intent, that's my question.
So I've only one person on the committee.
I understand, I'm asking.
What we felt is there needed to be something so that all town departments were functioning in the same capacity, because we had a situation on school department property, we had a situation on Parks and Rec property, we had. Library. We've had them on all, and each were handled just a little bit differently, and we said it has to be uniform across all of town properties, town buildings, town-owned land.
And the police department's in favor of the way it's written?
Yes, they, it was the police department that wanted the violations, that wanted the fines. We had gone back and forth about no fines, and they felt that to have it there would give it more teeth. Our goal, although we have, we have issued no trespass orders to those individuals who are, who were on Dartmouth-owned land, we then asked the police department to stand down while we continue to work with them, to move them into shelters, because it becomes what happens with their stuff, sometimes they have animals, so it was, there's a lot of work that needs to go, but we needed something, because as I said, now that we're, we're going to be paying a substantial amount of money to have sites cleaned up. They're not necessarily right on the road, so we have to send people into the property to clean it up and bring it out, so.
And on the fines, I mean, even though, they're not able to pay these fines.
Right, right.
If you feel strongly, we should put the fines in anyway, no matter what.
That was the recommendation.
Most communities that are putting bylaws into place like this, or guidance into place like that, do reference fines, it doesn't mean that the town has to impose the fines.
Right, right, okay. That's all that one, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Passing five zero. Article twenty-two, Personnel Bylaw Amendment, Position Title Change, and this is, the current title is Personnel Administrator, the new title will be Human Resources Director.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Any questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Passing five zero. Article twenty-three, Acceptance of Adjusted Exemption Amount Clause two twenty-one, oh, wait, two, twenty-two I. Feel I need to read this one, to see if the town will vote to accept General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause two twenty-two I, which authorizes an annual increase of the amount of the exemption granted under General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two, Clause twenty-two A, Clause twenty-two B, Clause twenty-two C, Clause twenty-two E, and Clause twenty-two F, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, to be effective for the applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, 2025.
Motion to recommend.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Mickelson. Yes, Mr. McDonald.
By reading this article, people are going to have absolutely no idea what this is. So the Finance Committee's recommendation actually fits a lot better, because this article authorizes the acceptance of a recently passed Massachusetts legislation, the HERO Act, which adds new local options to increase certain veterans exemption amounts. Clause twenty-two I would increase the amount of tax exemption granted to veterans on their homes annually by a cost of living adjustment determined by the Department of Revenue based upon the Consumer Price Index. So I think when this article is read, if the Finance Committee's synopsis of this would also.
Be helpful.
Yeah, a lot much helpful than just reading the article.
Just some additional clarification, both twenty-three and twenty-four for the veterans. We had to do twenty-three and twenty-four in conjunction with each other, so that's the reason why.
Correct.
You might have to talk about that.
Well, and I do say, because the second one does actual, actually say veteran exemption.
Well, but the, the thing is, yeah, but the thing is, is that each article is voted on separately, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twenty-four, Acceptance of Optional Additional Veteran Exemption, Clause twenty-two J.
Motion to recommend, sorry. Second.
Any questions on this one? Then we will be asking Matt Brule to be on hand to speak to both of these. All in favor?
Aye.
This is five zero. Article twenty-five, Leasing of 404 Elm Street Property, and this is the former Southworth Library, 404 Elm Street, front and on Elm Street. This does not say.
Doesn't give you the.
The agreement here, it is lease or other contractual agreement of not more than thirty years in duration, so that's what they're voting on.
Right. Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any questions on this one? No? Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor? Five oh. Article twenty-six, License to Carry Exclusive of Municipal Administrative Buildings on Town Property.
Well, I can't make a recommendation, because I don't, I would vote against it, so.
Okay.
Well, you can make a recommendation to vote, to recommend, not recommend it.
Motion to recommend.
Okay, Mr. O'Neil has made a motion to recommend.
I'll vote in favor, I'll vote a second, I'm sorry, I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Seconded for discussion. All right. Discussion on this article, Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, as the person who requested this be added, I'd like to clarify a few things about the article. The most recent changes made to the Massachusetts law, just a few months ago, concerning lawful carry, in my opinion, were good in many ways, but went too far when it limited trained license holders from entering administrative buildings. It was felt by so, it was felt so by so many in the legislature, that they left a window open for the towns to determine the issue on their own, by their own townspeople in settings like town meeting. As the Chief of Police stated in his letter of recommendation, there are close to five thousand trained licensed holders authorized and monitored by the chief in the town of Dartmouth. I believe Dartmouth is about seventeenth out of three hundred fifty-one cities and towns en masse, as far as the actual number of trained license holders. The chief's letter of support for the article delves into the particulars of the law and the reasons for his approval of the article. I'd like to touch on a few discussion points that I've heard recently. In particular, the Finance Committee submitted a minority opinion in opposition. Part of the opinion was that the municipal buildings would not feel safe in neutral. I and others would submit that those that have and will continue to carry illegally into the building will continue to do so, because they don't care about obeying the law. If trained license holders are denied entry while carrying, where is the neutrality and the safety then? The minority opinion also contends that a trained license holder leaving a firearm in their vehicle does not make the trained license holder unsafe, but it does make those inside the building safer. It in fact does not make the building safer for those that volunteer to sit on boards that are asked to adjudicate while serving in contentious meetings of high emotional content. It simply leaves the board members and all the participants in the meeting less safe and vulnerable, in my opinion. Lastly, the contention that allowance of this exemption would increase confusion among trained license holders fails to recall that the town has allowed this practice for around three hundred and sixty-one years, and this obscure change that was put into law just recently without much fanfare communication. I contend that changing it back. I contend that changing it back would actually clear up any confusion. I therefore respectfully ask that the town meeting approve Article 28, the Select Board, push it down to Town Meeting, or up, and allow trained license holders to lawfully and discreetly continue to protect themselves, fellow board members, and the employees and the citizens of Dartmouth. Thank you.
And you will be reading that, should this be on the warrant? You'll be reading that at town?
I will speak to it if need be, yes.
Anyone else have something to say? Do you? Dave have something to say? Go ahead. Who did you think, John, did you have something to say?
Oh, no, I, I mean, I mean, this is, this is one of those where you got to really kind of think about it. And, you know, I don't, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but I'm not also necessarily against this. I, I understand the rationale on both sides. My situation is, is that we're dealing with an amendment that's over 250 years old, that has, well, less than 250 years old, it's over 200 years. And that hasn't seen any kind of light of day when, but the instruments at the time the amendment was made is vastly different than what's being currently used. So to me, I think it's reasonable that the states need to address the Second Amendment and kind of bring it into today's thoughts and mechanisms. But I'm not also one not to oppose, you know, somebody have, you know, an LTC or, you know. I mean, I'm going to vote in favor of this because Town Meeting needs to speak up on it, and if there need be, you know. I don't necessarily agree with it, like I said, but I also don't necessarily-
Disagree.
Disagree with it. So it's just like one of those weird, this is one of those weird things that happens every so often. But I, I think the, the discussion needs to be brought on a different level than just locally.
Okay, I do-
But it needs to start locally, unfortunately.
I do anticipate that the chief will speak on this. I also anticipate that the, either members of, representatives from the school department or school committee will speak on this. Because this particular building, although it sits here at 400 Slocum Road, actually sits on school department property and has school, a school on one end and a school facility, the stadium, which is used regularly during the school year and in summer months. Potter School sits right near the north branch of the library, as in a butter. And Cushman School sits a budding Southworth Library, two additional municipal buildings. Council on Aging sits, sits next to, is in a butter of DeMello School. So the school department and school department personnel are very concerned. And we all know that this is particular to lawful carries of trained and licensed gun owners. And at no point in time would we be ever able to anticipate someone who has an illegal carry, what they, who, where they may go and what they may do. But I do think this will have a great deal of-
Discussion.
Discussion. Article number 26. That being said, when we initially looked at these articles almost, oh, a month ago, I did some digging in it, it's one of those things that the Select Board could vote to remove it. We could vote to recommend it and send it on to Town Meeting. We can also vote our conscience to it. But we did talk about surveying municipal employees through something quick at Survey Monkey. And I do think that that should be done so that we have an accurate picture of how people feel about this change. And I know that you've stated that this was something that kind of happened quietly where a change was made, and each town can now vote differently. But I think we need to do that for our employees so that they feel that they've had a voice. Mr. Tattelbaum?
I'm vehemently against, against the article. Originally, I was going to propose that the amendment, that we, the board block it so it doesn't, doesn't go to Town Meeting. But I think that's, I do believe in the democratic process, and I think Town Meeting members deserve the right to vote. I'll do everything I can to try to explain my position and maybe influence their vote in some way to listen to what I think is logic. The state of Massachusetts has one of the best, strictest gun laws in the country. And our town has the best, one of the best records of restricting and controlling guns on a, on a day-to-day and year-to-year basis. The chief does an outstanding job in renewing licenses on a regular basis. We have an impeccable record here in town compared to most. There can always be an issue anywhere, whether it's legal, it's not. The issue is, we do now is a respectful process, does allow people to carry. And in some states, it moves to public buildings, and the next thing you know, it moves to schools. Where does it stop? And I say stop it now. But I'm going to vote against it, and I will not try to block it to, let's reach Town Meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I've already mentioned that I'm not in favor.
I'm going to call for a vote, but on this one, I'm going to ask us to vote individually. So a roll call vote, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. McDonnell?
First of all, do we have a second?
We had a second by Mr. McDonnell, yes, sorry. We had a, we had it. Mr. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson? No. Mr. Tattelbaum? No. And Mrs. Brooks is a no. But it will go on to Town Meeting, and they will see how we voted. And I anticipate a great deal of discussion.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes, dear.
Do we want to consider putting on a, printing a majority minority report on this for the Select Board? For the article?
Mr. O'Neill said he would be speaking on behalf of the article.
Printing.
Yeah, but we're talking to both for and against.
Yeah, well, we have one more meeting. Everything has to be ready for the print of the following day. But I do think Mr. O'Neill speaking on behalf and one of us who's to speak. And I'm hoping to have the letters available from either employees or the survey numbers of employees, something from the school department that we will be offering at that time.
I certainly respect Mr. O'Neill's right to make that report. It does represent the, the minority part. I think we should probably have something for that. We want to, if you're going to read it or say something, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Yes, I think what we heard tonight.
Okay.
Great, it'll be very heated, that's for sure.
Article 27 is a citizen's position, petition, all alcohol beverage license. And this is particularly for Farming Coast. And the spokesperson will be Peter Bullard.
Motion to recommend.
Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Neill, thank you. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
So this passes 5-0. Now being sent around is our sign-off. Okay. Go, go ahead, nope, you're good. We're going to listen now to Gary's report as interim town administrator.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. On Wednesday, May 7, the town will be holding its annual Employee Health and Wellness Fair, Benefit Representatives and Professionals, including health insurance, banks, and fitness organizations, will be in attendance from 2:00 to 4:30 here on the third floor at Town Hall. We encourage all town employees to attend. On Friday, May 15, Friday, May 16, at noon, the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly will be celebrating Older Americans Month with a luncheon at the New Bedford Country Club, although the event is sold out. If you have any other questions about the event, you can contact the COA or the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly, 508-999-4717. That's all I have.
Thank you. Proposed town projects, we put this on here, but we are going to be discussing that on May 19.
Yeah, nothing new.
So we have nothing right now. Old business, we heard a lot on the 40B. Anything new on Bliss Corner?
Nothing new on Bliss Corner.
Lake Nokotoke?
Nothing new.
Municipal broadband?
Nothing new.
Mass DEP?
Nothing new.
Nothing. We have no minutes tonight. Select Board updates, Mr. Tattelbaum, do you have anything?
I do not, not today, thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
I'll say.
Mr. McDonnell?
Oh, I've spoken enough for today.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I want to mention is if you check out DCTV, not only will you be seeing our show, but coming up this, this week and next week, the music department, or this week and the following week, music department starts with their spring concerts, which will be livestreamed. And you can also attend them in person. We also have lots of spring sports happening. So if you want to get outside on a good day and go see a game, I encourage you to do so. We'll return in case Mr. Mickelson has anything. But let's move on to our two information points that we have for tonight. In your packet, we have the BJ's updated floor plan. As you may recall, we did ask them to notify us if they were to change or expand the liquor sales area. And therefore, they have done so, which is page 43 and 44 in your packet.
So they're taking the whole store over and it's going to be one giant?
It's going to be one giant liquor store. Nope, I think we can see that it's-
The one run is for all the departments, the rest of us are-
Change just a little bit more end cap use. Anyone have a question or comment on BJ's updated floor plan?
They didn't show us the old one.
We had seen it the last time.
No, but I mean, the comparison of square footage, that was the only reason for us to see it. Because they were, they can't enlarge the department unless they show it.
Okay, do you feel the need to have them come in to talk to us?
Well, I-
No, I mean, the guy's going to bring in a picture of what he, what we had before. They should have highlighted the extra space.
Is it extra space?
Is it? Well, I don't know.
As you know, BJ's was licensed by the Select Board in 2016 to sell alcohol in the hall of said building at 460 State Road. On May 20, 2024, the Select Board invited BJ's to appear at a hearing. During the hearing, BJ's agreed to notify the Select Board before changing the liquor sales area referenced on floor plans submitted to the Select Board.
Is it necessary to ask if the square footage changed, or is it not that big a deal?
Do we know that?
I, I don't know that. I'm going to ask that we inquire.
That'd be a good idea.
We don't really care where it goes. I think our interest is, is in the size of the, of the department.
Okay, I will ask or task someone to make that inquiry. And then the next thing that we had, actually on the agenda, is the purple bag cleanup recognition. So if you were following any social media recently, you may have seen pictures posted by Ian McGonigal. The town had a purple bag cleanup, and folks were able to pick up purple bags. And they had a considerable haul of debris throughout the town. So it was wonderful that they did this, and Ian McGonigal for kind of heading it up.
I want to thank him because I did this a few years ago, and I spent hours by myself, hours and hours cleaning up that mess. And it gets, and it's, no one has any, no regard, no pride in themselves to throw things out and put tires out there, you name it, it was in there. It's disgraceful, shame on all of you who do that on a regular basis.
We should ask for more, for more efforts and share those pictures so that people across the community can see all the work that the folks who were out there on, on those days doing it.
Thank you so much.
So thank you, Ian, for heading that up. I have nothing more on the agenda for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, boy.
Motion made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. All in favor? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Night.